Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We'll just pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the duties as elected officials. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20E, I announce that this meeting is being recorded by the Border Selectment Office and the Islam Meadow Community Access Television. Is there anyone else present that is recording this meeting? Seeing none, we will proceed. We're going to break our agenda just for a moment. Selectmen Federici would like to say a few words.
I just wanted to thank my board members and everyone here for accommodating me and coming in at nine in the morning instead of six in the evening. I'll appreciate it as I'm flying out tonight. I'll try to think of you folks, but I don't know.
I know, I know.
But in any event, I want to thank everyone for, you know, changing their schedules and accommodating me. So, thank you.
It's our pleasure trying to get things accomplished. And, you know, we're all volunteers, so we can help you. We will. Our first appointment is Chief Doug Melis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I too would like to thank you because I'm trying to get down to Boston. My wife has a medical appointment for some surgery, so I appreciate you letting me go first, wade through this. I know we've got a lot of things on the agenda.
Yeah, we do. That's all right. First, you're going to talk about the prescription drug test back day?
Yes, that was a soggy day Saturday.
It was.
Actually, the local representative from the Drug Enforcement, Julie McFarland, snapped the photo of Sergeant Manley and Sergeant Alessio and our college intern. We collected 166 pounds of prescription drugs, which is, I think, wonderful for getting them out of houses and getting them out of the environmental issues, the passives, to flush them down a toilet or from an alley. Been doing this now, I want to say, since 2011, we've moved 875.4 pounds of unwanted prescription drugs.
Remind you to speak to you about that off camera to also, we had some family issues that came, so it was making me have a difficult feeling. But I still have some, if I can turn them, that'd be great.
Hopefully, they'll do it again in the fall.
Okay.
It seems to be doing it spring and fall.
Okay, that'd be great. And the next thing is...
When an officer get injured, he's returned back to work. It was, they had a report of a stolen car. They were able to stop the vehicle, or attempted to stop the vehicle. The subject left the car running, jumped out of the car, and in the process, the officer named here kind of sprained his knee when he went to apprehend the subject. He took a few days off, but for notification purposes.
Okay.
We fill out all the paperwork for the retirement system and everything else.
Okay, so was he cleared?
Yes.
To come back? Okay, great.
So, he's back to work now.
All right. I'm glad to hear that. He's back now that it was injured.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Okay, and then the civil service list.
Yes, I've requested through Nick, through your office, to ask for a certified list of candidates for the Islam Meadow Police Department through civil service. I'm trying to prepare the town for the openings that we're going to have. This year, we're having, this next fiscal year of '15, Sergeant Bates is retiring in December.
Right.
And Sergeant Manley will be retiring in April. They have an academy that's starting in August 18th at STCC in Western Mass. I'd love to be able to get two candidates into that, that's September. They won't graduate until January 16th of '15. So, we're still going to have a little gap that will be running short staff-wise. Because what I want to do is replace the supervisors, the two sergeants that are retiring, with candidates. We have three candidates that passed the recent civil service sergeant's exam.
Okay.
So, it's like a dominoes concept here that we're filling as we move forward.
Okay.
We have an officer currently in academy due to graduate in June of this year. And that will bring us back up to full staff.
Okay.
But with the sergeants going, it's going to drop us with the promotions.
Drop you down to, another two. And so, you're asking for the two to be going to the academy?
Right. And it's a process that's involved. We have to go through the civil service. We have to go through the state for physical agility testing. And they're all assigned dates that you have. So, the sooner we can get on this to start the process, the sooner we can get their seats in the academy. I just don't want to be boxed out in the academy and find out that there's already 50 people in this academy.
Right, because there's a limit.
Right. That's not the situation currently. So, that's why I want to move sooner than later.
Are there going to be any, is there going to be an overlap? There wouldn't be an overlap because they would start after the others had left or been promoted?
Right.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, any questions?
When's that academy start, Chief?
The academy is August 18th.
August 18th.
And they renamed their Southern Mass Training Academy at STCC. They took up the building across from Commerce.
And when are you going to promote the sergeants?
The sergeants will be promoted in December.
December.
One will be promoted in December. I'd love to, again, I had a conversation with the chair about this. If the board could interview the prospective candidates, just three candidates, and make a selection that on December such and such, you will be the next sergeant. You're going to replace Sergeant Bates. I could send, that patrol officer is not a supervisor yet, but I could send them to sergeant's training at a savings to the town. Because once they become a sergeant, that's normally how we've done it in the past, is then they go to a two-week school, and I have to replace them on the shift for two weeks.
That's what it is for that sergeant, a two-week school?
A two-week school that they go to down at Roger Williams University. It's like a management program that they offer. So, that too, if we could, maybe over the summer, start the process, the interview process for the patrol officers for sergeant's position, thus saving the town some money.
Yeah. Do we have to expedite the interviews for you to get the thing going, or?
For the patrol officers, we have to wait till we hear from civil service. But civil service provides us with a list of laid-off officers throughout the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
And historically, none of them have ventured out here. A lot of them are down in the eastern part of the state. So, then we wait, I don't know if it's seven or 10 days, we receive another letter for residents in town that are on the civil service list. And then we'll start the process from there. We'll start background checks. And when we hone it down to how many have, we have two jobs, so we'll probably have five candidates. But a lot of them are tied. So, you could have 10 people.
Yeah.
So, we'll start that process with the blessing of the board.
Do we need to hold on that? I'm giving in the permission to go ahead and request the list, or do we just direct Nick to do that?
Madam Chair, there would be a vote of the board to direct me to request that list on the board's behalf.
I'll entertain a motion to have Chief Melis to go ahead, excuse me, Chief Melis requests to give the list from the civil service for two openings.
Someone.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's done. You got that. Nick, you'll take care of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, next.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe similarly, the chief is asking at this point for consideration of the plan with the sergeants. And at some point, that will be for the exam, chief?
That'd be for a certified list. It's just, I think it's just for certified.
Promotional.
For the promotional.
For the promotional list.
And then try to set up interviews, maybe in the middle of summer sometime. And so, we could maybe, at one in the mix anyways, and start to train it for that person.
And that would be for one, through the chair?
Yes, that's good.
For one opening?
For one opening. Now, there will be two, but, you know, again, the retirements are December and April. So, we'll start with December anyways and see how we go from there.
Okay, so you didn't want to do it both at the same time?
I had a conversation with civil service, and they said, you know, you can do that. And then they said the word, you can make them temporary sergeants. I said, well, that defeats the purpose.
Right.
Because I'm not, if I make them temporary sergeant, they're going to receive compensation for that.
Right, because they're not going to start until X day. So, you're, at this time, you're just asking for one?
Let's start with one, and then we maybe can move the other one up in the fall.
Okay, so I'll entertain the motion, excuse me, I do apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to have the, go to the list for the civil service sergeant promotional, is it exam list?
Certified list.
Certification list.
Someone.
I need a second.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, Madam Chair, just one point, just for the board. The first list for the patrolman is an open competitive list, and the list for the sergeant will be a promotional list.
That's promotional with, so from within?
Right.
Okay. With that clarification, and are there, is there any discussion after that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the next. You just stocked up there, Chief Melis.
I know, I did, I did. Checking my Christmas list.
That's all right.
I think we're up to towing contracts.
Towing contracts, all right.
Historically, we send letters out to the vendors that have provided towing service to our community in May and have them complete information. We have a packet of information. I believe I've provided the board with that. The fuel increase has increased to 7 percent. So, now, the basic tow is $90 for the state guidelines, plus $6.30 for a fuel increase, and then storage is $35 a day.
Since we have just a little bit of time, can we, are there other people that are interested in this towing contract?
In the past, what I've done is I sent it out, we've had to, since I've been here, maybe the second year after I started here in '05, '06, we have CJ's Towing out of Springfield, and we have Mascaro's Towing out of Springfield. In the past, I've sent a letter to Bach Towing, and I believe last year I sent one to Pride Towing.
Do we have somebody in town at all?
Oh, I know Bach is located in town. So, if you want, I...
Can we just check, if you don't mind?
I mean, if you want, or I can just send a letter out to those four vendors.
That would be great.
Just in reference to previous tolls that we've had, we haven't had, knock on wood, complaints for their operations. You know, and it's not, it's not like it's a million-dollar business, you know, for the town. But we want, again, you know, we have some crashes here at the Rotary. We want to get the cars out as soon as possible.
Okay. Do we have a little time before that expires? That expires on May's, late May, is it?
Well, we try to get it back in June because it takes effect the first Sunday in July.
Okay, all right.
Or first Monday in July.
If you would send those letters out, that would be great, and just get back to us. The AMR ambulance response on April 11th, 2014?
Yes, I prepared a letter. I believe you should all have a copy. There appears to be, you know, per the contract that we have on AMR, and again, it's not a financial contract per se. It's not like we're paying.
Right.
It's, it's, it's been a change number of years ago.
We're not be paying monetarily, but, you know, life is too expensive.
There was a delay. Per our contract agreement we have with them, an ambulance should be available at any location in the town of Islam Meadow within seven minutes of the receipt of a call for ambulance or transportation.
Right.
This case here, it took 25 minutes. I spoke with Dave Pelletier, who is a regional manager.
Okay.
I told him, you know, we're inquiring about this, and as noted on my report, there's been tie-ups at the hospital in removing a patient. They transport me to the hospital. The hospital won't accept me until they're ready to accept me. So, in the meantime, I'm sitting on that ambulance gurney with that crew, with that ambulance from this town. There had been a regulation, I think it's been relaxed, it used to be, you have to be off that litter in 30 minutes. Now, it's more like 45. They're working on it. AMR's working on it. But again, I don't think this is an issue that is ours to fight. I mean, we can make phone calls and support of them, but per their contract, they're offering a service that they'll have. Ambulance is in place.
Right.
So, they either have to budget, and again, healthcare, it's a flip of a coin as far as no one, if I'm going to need an ambulance over at your house today, or yours, or yours. And we're sharing with this ambulance with Hamden.
I get that, but they agreed to, that they could have the coverage. And so, if they don't have enough to have the coverage, then perhaps we need to reevaluate what we're doing because we have to protect our citizens. That's our first...
Part of the questions I posed to Dave Pelletier as well, I says, can they take someone to like an urgent care facility, like a dock in a box? And he says, no, per state regulations, an ambulance must transport to a hospital. So, it's fortunate. I believe the gentleman's okay.
Yeah.
And it's one of those scenarios that you never know what's going to happen because the ambulance could be taking someone down that's dizzy, and that's the only complaint. And while it's out of town, someone at 42 could drop of a massive heart attack.
Right.
You know, we're waiting. So, it's, they had been in the past, we've had some hiccups in the past, but nothing of this time.
Just remind me, how long have we been with AMR?
2000, I came here in 2005, and they were here then, I believe.
Okay, and we haven't had many complaints, or ones to mention?
No, there's been some off and on, you know, but this one here is, you know, I know Nick had contacted me about it.
Okay. So, do we send a letter to, we've sent a letter to AMR, or you've just had a conversation with Pelletier?
I've just had a conversation with them, and I would probably suggest to the board, if the board wants it, reach out and set up a meeting with them. Maybe they can come in and explain what happened a little more on their side.
Any discussion?
Well, yeah, you know, Chief, I think they've been pretty good in town here.
They have been. I mean, they're supportive in a lot of the events that we do, and as far as the responses, they've been, they've been great.
Because when my granddaughter got run over, they were up there like that, and she needed a second ambulance, and the second ambulance was there like that. So, and you know, I talked to other people, and they seemed to be, I mean, this was just an unforeseen thing.
And the territory too, you know, the distance you go from point A to point B. I know yesterday, just as an aside, we had a young boy with some psychiatric issues decide to run from his mom's house and jumped in a heritage park. And they were down there along with the officers, and they were able to coax the young boy out of the pond. And AMR was right there along with the fire department.
How is that young gentleman, that young man doing today?
If it was habitual practice of them...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. How is that gentleman doing today?
I know he was taken to the hospital for treatment. I don't think there's any serious injuries.
Okay. Going back to you, Mr. Selectmen Gorman, and then to Selectmen Federici.
If there was a habitual practice of them, I would say send them a letter. But, you know, they've been, they've been good, I think.
No, like I said, it's, they're few and far between, and I'll defer to Selectmen Federici. And I'm not, the top of my head, because we're the contact because of the 911 calls. I'm hard-pressed. I know we do have delays because we have, if they are jammed up, we'll have La Meadow Fire, Wilbraham Fire, Munson Fire, and Agawam Fire come over to do transports. But generally, if it's a, if it's a life and death situation, they're usually right there. And for this to go 25 is completely rare.
Okay. Selectmen Federici?
Yes, well, I agree that for the most part, they were good, but I know we've had, we had one other incident about six months ago, someone that I knew with a son.
Yes.
And they weren't too thrilled with the situation. But my thought process, being tremendously selfish about it, is I don't, you know, depending on how many vehicles they have or don't have, if I'm the one laying on my kitchen floor with a heart attack, I don't care that they can't get a vehicle, they got to get a vehicle there. So, you know, and that's for all the townspeople. So, it's, you know, I understand their issues with the shortage of vehicles and things, but still, it's their responsibility to answer the call, so.
Right. Now, if it was 25 minutes for me to get a cruiser there, we wouldn't even be talking right now.
Exactly.
So, you know, the fact that we were able to provide some level of care to this person, to get this person oxygen in. We have AEDs in the vehicles if we have to initiate CPR.
And that's what you did in the other case I was talking about too, where your officer helped the young man until the ambulance got there, so.
With the blessing of the board, I would prefer that we do send a letter to AMR urging them to make sure that the coverage and this doesn't happen again.
Is that a motion?
That, I'll entertain that motion.
Someone.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick, you?
Madam Chair, you want me to draft up a letter? Will the letter come from the chairman on behalf of the board? The board signing it, how would you like that?
Would you all like to sign it, or would you prefer for me to sign it?
No, you can sign it. That's fine.
Okay, so I'll sign it. All right. I believe that the last item is for executive session. And we'll take that up once our counsel arrives.
Is that a possibility? Could we do that at another meeting?
Oh, at another meeting, sure.
Sure. I've got to get down to Boston.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
An option for the board to consider is to hold its own session.
All right.
And then maybe get back to the chief for...
Great, for the next follow-up. Okay, so we'll have our conversation, and then we'll get back to you. All set?
Yep.
Have a safe travels.
One other thing, we have an auction, and I was trying to get the date. It's going to be later in May. We have a host of items up at the police department that will be on. The proceeds, yeah, there is. But the proceeds go back to the general fund.
Okay.
So, we usually have a good turnout. I think some people really think Ma Barker used one of the bicycles in a robbery back in the 30s, but...
Oh, really?
Yeah, bicycles go crazy, someone is pricing on them. So, but, thank you very much.
Good luck to the families.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Take care, Nick.
Okay, our next appointment is Carolyn Vernon from the Council of Aging Director.
Good morning. Okay, I'm just, I just wanted to discuss the role of the grant writing process. As you know, my primary responsibility is to write grants, and we get them typically the state, the federal level, and private donations and private grants. Typically, the only grant that requires a signature from the Board of Selectment is the state grant. It's your standard contracts, contract form. And I'm just, I'd like to refer just to the recent grant, the Service Incentive Grant, where in March, when we write the grants, it's a very competitive grant, and they're really looking at money that's kind of left over. So, they don't fund a lot of the grants throughout the state. So, it's very competitive. So, I worked really hard at writing this grant for $25,000 for our transportation. One of the things that the grant, that the state did ask, one of the conditions is that they, could I assure them that that money would be spent in a quickly timely, it's a very quick turnaround, as soon as they have the grant available. And it's usually not until the last few weeks of April, beginning of May, and that's got to be spent by June 30th. They wanted that reassurance that we would be able to do that. So, I gave them that. And I've also been writing grants for the state for about 20 years, so that there is a level of confidence that when I tell them I'm going to do something, I'm going to be able to follow through. The recent delay with the grant writing last week did kind of put me in an uncomfortable situation. So, I just, I want to see if there is, if the chair can't sign it, is it possible to have another Board of Selectment sign it so that I can do that quick turnaround?
No, I think what it is, Carolyn, is that, the same explanation that you just provided, if that were provided at that, at the time when you had asked me to sign it, I don't sign anything without, without going through it. And I asked for the gentleman's name, and I did speak with him, and it was turned back to him on Thursday. He said I had until Friday to do it. So, that was taken care of.
In all due respects, I did explain that there was a sense of urgency. I needed to get that back. And I just had difficulty reaching you, so I, and I don't know if there's a better way to reach you than we could have had that conversation.
Better way for you to reach me, and that's 413-486-0277. I have a 24/7 secretary who will answer, and if she is not available, your message will be text to me, and I will get it right away, as opposed to you calling my cell phone.
And email is not...
And I do apologize for not giving you that information sooner. So, I'm not able to answer my phone during some of my meetings.
Okay, so, just moving forward, is it possible to have, is it, and one of the state's recommendations when they called throughout last week was, could another selectman sign it? Is that a possibility when they're asking for a sense, when they've got that sense of urgency?
I prefer to sign them as chair.
Okay. Would it be helpful, moving forward, when I'm about to write a grant for the state? At some point, does the Board of Selectmen want to be involved in that process?
I think it's always good that you, that you make us aware of it. I think that would be helpful for all of us. I know that you've worked very closely with Selectmen Federici in the past, and I do realize that this, there have been some changes. Some people are more willing to sign off on things without going through them. I am, for whatever reason, I like to go through and make sure I understand exactly what we're getting into, not questioning what you're doing as a director, but just to make sure that I'm looking, you get a second set of eyes on it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next appointment is Dan Halyard, and, there he is, okay.
Good morning.
Oh, good morning. You're here with regards to the ADA Transition Plan.
That is correct.
Okay. Do tell.
Well, for two years, we applied for a grant. It's a community development block grant, and we did it with Agawam because that improved our chances of receiving the grant.
Oh, okay, yep.
Last year, we were awarded the grant along with Agawam. And part of the grant is an ADA Transition Plan.
Okay.
The transition plan, how it works is, and I've already done some pre-work with them, they go around to all the public buildings, the sports fields, the parks, and they, they list the barriers.
Okay.
And then they develop a plan to lift those barriers.
Okay.
And it's over time. It's a living document which will be changed as we complete projects or something else is found.
Okay.
This is a requirement through the Department of Justice, and we've never had this. It was back in 1994, I believe. That's when it became a requirement.
Okay. Okay.
I know we're working on that.
Now, when you say over time, what, because, you know, my time and your time might be different. What, are we talking about years, months?
Years.
Okay, couples, 10?
It depends on finances.
Okay.
It could be five years, more than likely, it'd be around five years. There are, there are items that are, areas that are going to be very, very expensive and difficult to do. So, that would have to go into capital planning, and that could be in the five-year plan. So, that could not happen in a five-year. Something as simple as fixing a broken railing, that can be done easily right away. So, you get the small stuff done at the lowest cost to make it more accessible. You have to, they look at all areas, so they know which are important ones. These people do this for a living.
Okay.
In fact, the RFP is out right now, I emailed it to Nick? Yeah, the RFP is out right now.
Board has a hard copy of it in electronic file.
Okay.
For somebody to write the, to do this transition plan. We can't do it. It's just too complex. So, it's, I believe it's $45,000 for Islam Meadow, and Agawam doesn't have one either. So, the RFP is out for both the city of Agawam and the town of Islam Meadow.
So, it's $45,000 for each town?
Yeah, that's part of the grant.
So, a total of 90?
Total of 90, within the grant. Total of 90, within the grant.
Okay.
So I've been locked into the grant.
Okay, so the RFP has gone out, how long is the RFP?
Madam Chair, I explained a little bit further for the board.
Please.
Dan mentioned that this is part of an overall community, community development block grant, this is one of three components that the town was awarded, the overall, just a little bit of background if I could.
Please.
The overall awarding of the grant between the towns of Agawam and East Long Meadow was in excess of $740,000, this 90,000 of it covers this plan for both communities, Agawam is actually the lead community on the grant.
Okay.
And so they are, well, actually, our administrator for the grant is the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and when it comes to issuing RFPs, they're the entity that is handling all of that, so that's where, you know, this is coming from, and, and again, Agawam really is the lead community for the grant.
Okay.
The other portions, the other two portions that we have are, is it Quarry Hill?
Right, improvements, improvements.
Improvements at Quarry Hill, and then there's monies in there for the needy people in East Long Meadow, somebody has a door that doesn't stay closed, then they can apply for the money.
Okay.
They, they, they give it to a contractor, the contractor goes and does the job, they watch the job, and, and I do too through permitting.
So how would a needy person know where to apply?
It's already been put out.
How was it put out?
It was put out through the senior center.
Oh, the senior center, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could maybe interject just a little bit, just maybe to talk a little bit more about that part of it, Mr. Halyard, if it'd be okay with, through the chair, if that's all right with you, that, that part is, Dan's absolutely right, it's, it's a program to help with limited housing projects for those that would qualify as identified back in the grant writing process by target area within town, this was back in the fall, again, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is the administer of this portion of the program, and when Dan is saying that it went out, it was advertised last fall, people had an opportunity to contact the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission directly, when he said it went out through the senior center, there was notifications that were sent, I believe, through the newsletter, and maybe postings, anyway, it was relatively speaking, because of housing projects, a new roof, or a portion of a roof can be, costs, costs quite a bit, so there were perhaps maybe between five and eight projects that could be done for East Long Meadow residents that would qualify.
Okay, so it's not just seniors?
It's, it's not just seniors, it was everybody.
Well, financially, they have to qualify.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, if you sent it to the senior center on their newsletter, how would somebody else know about that?
It was advertised.
There was advertisement and reminder.
And the reminder, that's where I was going, okay, thank you.
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission took care of it.
That's right, and, and just to further clarify, for the board, is that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission administered this, that means that the town received no phone calls, no inquiries, any inquiries were directed down to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so the town was not involved in reviewing of any projects.
Okay.
Or applications and so forth.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I met with them a month ago, and they already have quite a few people that apply for it, and it depends on, how many projects, it depends on how extensive and how much money one project eats up, so, so smaller projects, fixed stairs and things like that, you know, there, there might be an opportunity for more people to, to receive this.
Maybe just one other point, then two, just for, for this program, if I could just explain, the way it works is whatever amount of money that was allocated for a particular project is given upfront free to that homeowner, and then there is a sliding scale depending on how, how long they live in that home, and so over time, a prorated amount is taken off of that loan to, I think it's 15 or 20 years, Dan?
Yeah, it was.
Where there's no payback, if you will, but if, if the home was sold, say, after seven years, they would owe a prorated portion back, so it's a, it's a, in effect, a loan program, but it's a forgiveness.
Okay, so the, the loan and the interest rate is 0%, correct?
Right.
And then if they stay in the home, there's an opportunity for X amount of years that the whole loan will be forgiven?
Correct, right.
Great, got it.
You got it?
I got it.
Um.
Do, do you have it?
Yes.
And do you?
I've just got a couple basic questions, if I may, Agawam's sort of the point person on this?
Agawam's the lead town, the city.
Yeah, I noticed they're the ones who make the decisions as far as the RFPs, and how much input do we have in that, any?
I got the RFP for the transition plan, and I passed it on to the committee, so they're requesting that if we have any, we see anything in there that they, that we, we would question, would like to see changed, then we can do it.
Okay, all right, yeah, because I just wondered, because I noticed.
No, we have a lot of say in it.
Okay, because I noticed in here it says, as awarding authority, Agawam has the right to, you know, disallow many RFPs that they don't find in the best interest for Agawam and East Long Meadow, at least that's what it says in the contract.
Well, see, we would have to agree to that.
Okay, that's not the way it's written, that's why I was wondering, and, and, and second of all, how, how's the money split up?
As far as the money.
Two towns.
Um, it's, it's, it's pretty much even, I believe we're just slightly less than them, I think this, our portion is 394,000, theirs is like 410,000, and I'm not sure the numbers, I, I, I don't have them in front of me, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty fair.
Okay.
It's pretty, and the board of selectmen are the, what is it, they, the authority within East Long Meadow.
Okay.
So anything that has to be signed, has to be signed by the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Nick, can I ask that you also print out a hard copy of that, please?
I believe you have one, but I will make sure.
What's that, of the RFP?
You said it was in the other thing, but I don't have it.
Here you go.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I'll just print another one.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I read through that, and I didn't see anything that I thought should be changed.
All right, so if, you don't have, you have any more comments?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming in today, appreciating, I always like to have things for East Long Meadow.
What's that?
Always like to have things for our residents, that doesn't cost them anything.
Especially when it's free money.
Exactly.
That's what I like, free money.
Free is wonderful, our next appointment is at 9:45, we're running a little bit ahead, but I see that he is here, Tom Florence, are we billing and collection procedures? Okay, hi, how are you?
Hello, clarification, Mr. Florence?
I'm pardon.
A little clarification?
Uh, this was an item that the chairman wanted Mr. Florence to come in to discuss billing and collection procedures with respect to, I believe, personal and the property taxes, past due.
Got it, okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, I, I didn't know exactly the details, which I was looking for, so I put together our collection procedures.
Okay.
And how we handle real estate, motor vehicle, water sewer.
More concerned about if there is a past due bill, what happens with, with that, what is the billing procedure, I'm sure, I don't know, and I'm asking, because, not saying that I'm going to be past due, but it was brought to our attention that something just, there was a little glitch, so I just want to speak to you about that, and if we can, you can give us a synopsis of what happens if somebody is past due and their, let's say, 2011 taxes, what happens in 2012?
Okay, and real estate?
Real estate.
Okay, what happens?
Real estate?
Personal property, right, I mean, there's four different, we have real estate, personal property, water sewer, motor vehicle, they're all, you know, through Mass General Law, follow that to a T, they're all handled a little bit different.
Okay.
So, do you want to look at the real estate?
Real estate.
Yeah, what happens is, for example, the real estate bills are due third quarter, fiscal year '15 are due tomorrow, okay, so, after the final real estate bill is due, we demand the bill in a reasonable period, which is approximately 14 to 20 days after the May 1st date, so approximately May 14th to May 20th, right between that timeframe, if we still haven't received payment, we send out a demand notice to the, to those, and, and I do want to say that, right now we currently maintain a 99% collection rate.
Okay, so this is.
Which is the top two in this, the top two in the state.
Okay.
Yeah, after that, if the collector chooses, we can start the tax, the tax taking or lien process.
Okay.
If the demands, they still haven't paid us.
Okay.
Okay, what we've been doing is we've been waiting longer, again, we're very, very fortunate, we have a town that most people do pay.
Okay.
So, I'm willing to work with, and it's, and it's worked very well, work with the, with the taxpayer and the customer, we send out letters of notification, we do phone calls, and nine times out of 10, they know, yeah, I'm late because of what happened here, because of circumstances.
Yep.
So, we're willing to work with them, and if a payment plan is necessary.
Okay.
We, we do that, again, with the Mass General Law, we have to collect at least 10% of the original tax note.
Okay.
Or $10, whichever is greater, so basically, we're not going to turn anything away that they want to give, yeah, so, you know, after that, you know, we monitor those closely, right now, what we've done, we've just leaned the 2012 taxes, so, we only have 40, approximately 40 parcels that are in, in a lien state.
Okay.
And out of those, almost 20 are, and I mentioned, land of low value, the abutted properties, they're almost like the pain in the butt pieces of land, that you can't build on, the little slices or pieces, so to speak, and so we've worked with the Department of Urban and State, if we get clarification on their land of low value, then we can go ahead and contact the abutter, and say, you know, we call them and say, this is not a buildable property, the person who used to live here is not living here anymore, are you interested in buying this small piece of abutted land?
Okay.
And about half the time, they said, sure, you know, it gives them more property if they want to.
Exactly, it's not buildable.
If it's not buildable, if they want to put flowers, or cut the grass, or whatever.
Exactly.
So that's probably half of the ones that we have.
Okay.
Okay, and after that, if payment is still not made, then it's a decision of the treasurer, he works with the collector, so I think I know how that works.
Right-handed, talks to the left hand, is that what it is?
That's it, yeah, exactly, to proceed with foreclosure, and we work their tax title attorneys to take the property for East Long Meadow, and we then must wait one year, and again, that's the Department of Urban and State's Mass General Law, before we can start with an auction process, or anything like that, and again, we've been very lucky, we've only had an auction off one house since I've been here.
Okay.
And, and, which is a credit to, I mean, the good people in town for paying, and, you know.
Can I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't want you to lose your train of thought either, is it better for you to finish and then ask at the end?
Uh, no, no, that's it.
Okay, that's it.
Give me work of the auctioneer, and, you know.
Okay, so during that year that you're waiting, are there any notices that are sent out to the individuals stating that?
Yeah.
It, it's past due, for instance, to give you a direct scenario, if they're behind on their 2011, however, they pay their 2012 and '13 taxes on time, but they still haven't paid that 2011, are we still sending notices out to them to make sure that they know that that's still past due?
Absolutely, that's, that's one of the reasons why, you know, our rate is so high, we, I mean, it's constant, you know, if it's not a month, if it's two months, you know, there'll always be notified between us and our tax title attorney, they'll always get something in the mail, but a lot of times what happens is, if it's a death in the family, or, you know, people just don't want to be bothered with it, you know, but, you know, that's where the tax title attorney does it, you know, they do a really good job for us, they can track people down, if it's family members, if it's somebody who's on a, a deed or title from years ago, and they say, hey, you owe this, and, but just to get back to your question real quick, too, the 2011, '12, and '13, so you always try to pay the latest.
The latest.
Or, or the early.
The earliest ones, so they would, so if somebody came in and paid their 2012, and there was a balance on the 2011, they would automatically go back to, put that money on the 2011?
For interest reasons, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, yeah.
I would suggest that a conference be made with the individual, Mr. Florence, and a representative to discuss that, so, because he's, he's outlined his procedure, and it's, it's different than what was, was told, okay, all right, thank you so much for coming in today.
My pleasure, and I just want to say that we've always been willing to work with everybody, everybody's situation is different, and again, we're fortunate, we don't have a ton of people that are in tax title, again, credit to the town and the people who live here, but we're always willing, whatever works best for them, we're willing to take that extra step, all within the Massachusetts General Law, to help with the conlinked payments.
Okay, any questions before you leave?
Just out of curiosity, you were just saying that, that was told differently than what you heard, who did you hear it from, I mean, if you're not talking.
I, I don't, I don't think that that should be.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're not talking to the person who's in charge of it, then it's, you know, probably is going to be some form of misinformation, so, because he's the one who knows what he's doing.
Right, and I wouldn't tell anybody.
Well, I would agree with that, but when there's misinformation, that's why we have our department heads come in, clarify, and not just clarify it for one instance, clarify it for everybody, so we all are hearing the same thing at the same time, and we could always refer back to the tapes, selectmen's organ.
Through the board, but you say that all, but I talked to the individual, so I, we're listening to his side of the thing, and I listen to the, the taxpayers' side of the thing also, so it's not misinformation, like you're saying.
Oh, oh, uh-uh, we're not doing that, no, no, we're not going to do that, okay, thank you very much for coming in today, sir.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Angela, my pleasure.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, our next appointment is at 10 o'clock, we are still a little early, which is wonderful, would be Colin Drury, if he, he's here, so, have him come on up, he's our director of recreation.
Yes. How are you? Good.
Okay, um, you were called, just wanted to find out some of your procedures.
Sure.
With regards, congratulate, first of all, let me say congratulations on your coaches' orientation last night, I attended, and it was absolutely fab, and a lot of young, young people out going to coach their teams, they're excited, the little ones are excited.
It's the first time we've had every single coach show up.
Yeah.
So it was perfect, we got all information out, and it really worked out nice, so.
That was absolutely fabulous, so congratulations on that first, and, and doing a great job with that, just a question on with regards to summer camps and how we go about that, and, and the process that happens with how we assign our summer camps.
Sure, generally speaking, each January.
Because it's about that time, sorry.
Yeah, generally speaking, each January and February, we put out on the website, and in some cases, in the reminder, if we don't hear back from anyone on the website, is a request from anyone who would like to run a summer clinic through us, could be hurling, you know, could be anything, so, you know, we bring all that information in, so if we get, you know, six people who want to do baseball, six people want to do basketball, we take in all their proposals essentially, you know, just, I want to do this, these are my credentials, I think it should cost this, so what we do with that is, take in all that information, and we look at the names.
Okay.
And we try to make sure that we're giving an opportunity to our varsity head coaches first, at the high school, if we don't hear from any of them, obviously, we want to make sure that we still offer a soccer, a basketball, a baseball, you know, clinic in the summer, we don't want to not offer something for the children of East Long Meadow, so, that's the general process, is just to, you know, solicit proposals from coaches as they all come in, identify who those people are, their credentials, what they want to do, we also make sure that they're cost-effective as well.
Okay.
You know, someone comes in and says, I want to do a baseball camp, $3,000 a week, maybe that one's not going to work out for, you know, a rec department, maybe that one's more of a baseball school, you know, somewhere else, so, we try to make it affordable, give our coaches at the high school, and local coaches as well, some of our youth coaches actually run a few clinics with us as well, so, giving local people the opportunity first, and if you don't hear from anyone, you know, we make sure that we still try to offer those summer programs.
Okay, so Colin, how are you aware that? So Colin, how are you aware that, um, varsity coaches, who they are? Have you been made aware? Is there something that we could do to help to make sure that you get that information? Are you getting that information? Not necessarily to that order?
Yeah, I guess, um, I'm, I'm not getting that information officially. Um, I do know that high school coaches, it's a one-year contract, so they could kind of be a revolving door. If I've worked with them in the past, um, you know, being in the rec department since two thousand eleven, you know, I know Scott Raymond.
Okay, well, yeah, well, yeah.
He does the stuff every year with us, but we just met Ryan Corbett, who's our cross-country coach. Um, he came in, gave a proposal to do a endurance, you know, running camp for kids, or clinic over the summer. So that's a new one this year, so we're excited to finally meet, uh, a running coach. But I may have never known who the cross-country coach was unless he came through the door, because he must have heard about the, uh, request for proposals, so...
Okay, so perhaps we can, um, ask our A.D. at the high school to send you, I know that they send out notices to all the different places saying who the coaches are. Perhaps he can just add you on, um, as a C.C., um, as they change.
Yeah, maybe for each season, you know, fall, winter.
Now, for re- returning, um, when somebody's returning, uh, to do a clinic, do we solicit to the people who have had programs in the past? Or is it all of fresh whoever solicits?
You know, with...
I mean, whoever returns, um, information?
Yeah, so we, we take in all their proposals.
Right.
But as I said, we make sure that we go through who is an East Long Meadow person first. We give them that opportunity. Usually, it's the same person every year, but, you know, every once in a while, we'll have a different coach at the high school. Um, basketball's a great example. Uh, we've had, you know, three different basketball coaches pretty much in the past three years.
Okay.
Um, so that's a good example of making sure that we know who that head coach is as opposed to giving the old head coach a, a summer program. So we try our best that when we receive those, um, proposals, that we're finding out who our head coaches are for each of the sports that we receive proposals.
Okay, so if I run a summer camp, um, last year, will I get a notification from you, or will you automatically bring me forward for the next season?
It's, um, it kind of depends on, you know, exactly what it is. Um, you know, we put out the proposal to kind of everyone.
Okay.
You know, mostly because we're very busy down there at the rec department.
Okay.
So, you know, we kind of put it on the professionals to come to us with their ideas.
Okay.
You know, we kind of take that initiative to say, I want to serve the town.
Okay.
And then, you know, we then bring them through the process of how to set up the clinic, and, you know, we do all the registrations, get them the fields, you know, paint the fields for the, you know, whatever sport it might be, so...
So, um, my understanding is that one of the coaches from the high school, and I'm glad to hear that, they are giving first preference. One of the coaches from the high school was not able to have their camp that has been established, um, several years. And so, I wanted you to clarify that a little bit, and if at all possible, if you could give her the same slot. I know that you have another gentleman, um, that Zach?
Yep.
Who's, um, going to be running a camp. He's not, he, this is his first time, right?
First time, yeah.
Okay, Springfield College?
Yep.
Okay. And the other person is Mauer?
Mauer.
Mauer? Okay. Is there any way possible, I know that you've committed the arena.
Yep.
Um, my understanding is that she has the same camp at the same time, and she's got things out already. Is there a possibility that she can have the field behind the high school and keep her same time?
I think what you don't want to do is have two soccer clinics going on at the same exact time. You know, marketing-wise, as well as getting participants on the field, it just doesn't make sense to have two of the exact sports happening at the same time. We actually don't have any sports happening at the same time. So how our summer's typically set up is, you know, we'll do like soccer, soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, basketball, football, football. That way, the kid who plays football that also plays lacrosse and also plays soccer can go to all three, as opposed to having to choose what sport to do that week. You know, so that's how the summer is set up.
Okay, so how is it that she was overlooked, I guess, would be the question?
She wasn't overlooked. She contacted me in, in, in April. So, right when she contacted me the next day, I found her a week and, and gave her a week. It's the last week in July, that crosses over into August.
Isn't it common that she usually has it during a certain set time, and she's done that for, she's done that for years?
It's actually the, uh, the first time I've ever met Jenny. She's never done anything with me since I've been at the recreation department. So I, she contacted me in April, and we gave her a week right away, whatever we had left. You know, I would have preferred that she contacted me in January. That way, you know, we could have given her, you know, the second week or third week or whatever. To me, the weeks don't matter on the sports. You just don't want to fall into the high school season because we no longer have the turf really anymore during that. You want to make sure that, uh, you know, your summer clinics are happening in the first six weeks of summer. Really doesn't matter when they happen, you just don't want to make sure. You want to make sure that you're not competing with Springfield College's baseball camp, and then Winix lacrosse camp. You know, we want to make sure that we're on opposite weeks of all that. So what we do is market research to make sure that we're not putting, uh, the same sport on any week that anyone else is doing it, because, you know, we want to pull, um, kids from East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Hamden. We want to bring everyone into East Long Meadow and see how good we do, uh, sports here in our town.
Didn't her husband contact you though? When did he contact you?
He contacted me, I'd have to go back into my email, but I think it was late February.
Late February.
You know, first off, I, I was unaware that that was her husband. You know, with, uh, different last names, you don't really know. You know, I'm not in the circle of who gets married. So he contacted me as the, uh, player coordinator for the Western Pioneers, and the recreation department has a policy that they don't affiliate with outside organizations. And reason being is you don't want, you want to continue to be neutral, you know, because there's multiple orga- organizations here in East Long Meadow. You want to make sure that you're not choosing one over the other. And since they're for-profit organizations, you want to make sure that they're going out, getting their fields on their own and doing their own, um, you know, camps and clinics. You know, the rec department, what we try to do is offer opportunities to independent coaches that just want to, uh, coach kids.
My understanding is that Zach is also affiliated with a club team.
Yes, um, that, that, that's true. He's an assistant coach for, for one of the clubs, but, uh, we're not affiliating. We have seven coaches, and one of them helps out an organization. We don't have the Stars logo on our, on our opportunities for kids. We make sure that, uh, we don't affiliate, you know. So what I'm affiliating with is essentially, uh, coaches that are college level. One is from England, one's from Ireland, one's from right here in the United States. It's an excellent opportunity, um, and since I didn't hear from any of the head coaches at the high school, I looked at it as an opportunity to bring something new into the town of East Long Meadow, to offer the, uh, summer clinic for the kids here.
When did you contact them?
Contact who?
Um, the person from England, Zach.
Oh, yep. Um, he, uh, he started contacting me, um, in the fall. But officially setting it up, we, uh, once I didn't hear anything from any of the head coaches at the high school, yeah, I heard from five, you know, for the ones we have going on right now. Once I didn't hear anything, then we officially set it up and put it into print, um, you know, so that, that was the process.
I, I, I want to hear from my other board members also, but I think at some point, though, we reach out to, to, to our coaches at the high school first. Not necessarily just sitting back waiting, um, to make sure, because this is a very uncomfortable situation that we're in right now. And it's something that had been established over a time period where they had that particular week. And I understand that you didn't under- that they weren't married, but the reason that you gave Jenny's husband was that he was affiliated with a team. However, I hear, hear you saying that Zach is affiliated with the team also. And so, it doesn't feel like it's equal right now, but I certainly will listen to my other, uh, board members to see if they have it. I'm going to selectman Federici first, and then to selectman Gordon.
Okay, thanks. Couple of questions. I mean, just to clarify, I don't want to beat the proverbial dead horse here, but you were talking about these pe- this, Jenny doing this for years, but you said she hasn't been, she hasn't done it since you've been there.
Uh, no.
So how many years, how many years have you been there?
Uh, since two thousand eleven.
Okay, so the last couple of years she hasn't been there. Second thing, when her hus-...
May I clarify?
Sure.
Um, her husband, uh, and her work together. So her husband has, and she has been there, but he's been the contact person.
Oh, okay.
So she has been there, he just, he wasn't aware of it.
Oh, okay.
I could clarify as well, is, um, the, the pioneers were actually working through procuring the field through the high school.
Right.
Um, so, as for the rec department, you know, it was, um, this was the first time I heard from, from Jenny.
Right, okay. Okay, that's fine, yeah. They said the other question doesn't matter, so that's fine.
Okay. Selectman Gordon.
Wouldn't it be a better policy for you to get a hold of East Long Meadow people before you put it out to someone in Springfield?
Um, well, that's, that's what we do, is we put it out on our town website, um, to, you know, solicit people from town that are checking the website, going on. You know, we don't hear from anyone, you know, we still want to try to offer the program for the children. You know, because really, it's the children are first. You know, when you walk through my door, I, I care about, um, you know, having multiple programs for kids. Um, you know, since I've been, um, your recreation director, I have created a full pre-K program for children, because we were underserving the community. And the last thing I want to do is start underserving them in the summer as well, which is kind of a, it's a weird season because there's no leagues happening. So really, we have to think outside the box and try to bring in as many people as possible, like our backyard All-Stars program. You know, and, um, so we try to make sure that we're offering things, but if we don't hear from, um, you know, the field hockey coach, you know, I'm going to try to reach out to my coaches' network to see if I can find someone to come in and do a field hockey program here in town. Now, if the field hockey coach reaches out, obviously, that's my first, that's my first step, is to make sure that we're, um, offering these opportunities to our coaches here in town, which the list from, um, R.J. Marhefka is going to be actually really appreciated. You know, so if I can get their name and their email each season, um, then I can offer them them through my office. So it's just kind of amping up the procedure a little bit, adding another step, but it's a, it's a good step.
I think that will.
It's a way to make things better. You know, I will say that, you know, over the past, you know, three years in the department, I've been trying to make things smoother and easier for everyone. You know, but it has been, uh, quite the task to kind of, uh, smooth things out in the department, so...
So, so, and, and I will give you that, all of that, and, and more. However, we are in a situation where she has already set a schedule where she does it every year. And I, I think for this just one year, and I know, um, you don't usually do this, but because of, it was our hiccup, um, I feel, that perhaps we should just go ahead and have that backfield opened up to her. Not the, not the turf, because you've already assigned that, and I don't, but I think that that backfield should be opened up to her, and she's, and then the next year, certainly moving forward, everybody's on the same, uh, playing field. This way, it makes everybody equal right now for, um, just for this season. What do you think? Well, let me be consistent.
Well, I, I wanted to finish.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me? Okay.
I, I think first priority should go to any East Long Meadow team, no matter how your format is. I think they should be contacted before you try to get anybody outside in another town. Because these are our kids, you know, these people pay the taxes here, and I think it was wrong what happened to this young lady, because she is a head coach in East Long Meadow.
Let me clarify...
It was unfortunate, yeah.
Let me clarify that Jenny contacted me after we even went to, we already printed. You know, we had flyers all over town. You know, so she, really, she came in late.
But her husband had contacted you earlier, you know?
And again, I mean, how am I supposed to know that she's married to him? You know, especially when someone identifies themselves as the Director of Player Development for the Pioneers. You know, if this, hey, this is Jenny Voight, the, or Jenny, um, Mauer, the head coach of the East Long Meadow Spartans. Oh, cool, come on in the office, let's have a meeting. But that's not how it was presented to me. So, I get what you're saying, and I completely agree. And, and now that, you know, we can have R.J. from the high school get me those contacts each year, it'll be a quick email, you know, and at the end of December, early January, saying, you know, if anybody wants to, this is the deadline to get proposals into the rec department. You know, so that's, that's, that's good.
Is, one more question. Is there anything we can do to rectify the situation? Because you say it don't matter when the kids play between here and there, but I coach a lot of teams, and it does matter. Because if I, if I line up kids and they're on vacation for down the road, I got to try to get all those kids together these weeks that I can get.
Right.
You know, you know what I'm saying? You know, it makes it, it makes it difficult.
I think the recreation department has been definitely accommodating, um, to, to Coach Mauer. And she called us, well, she shot us an email saying, you know, we wanted to, we want to do a, a summer program. We gave her a week the following day. I actually just reached out again to, uh, for details, um, for that. That way, I can start a marketing process, um, to try to get people.
Well, she's already...
As for, for your...
She's already done a marketing, um, piece prior to know, knowing that there was a problem, and that's my understanding. So what I would like to do is entertain a motion, um, to have Jenny Mauer's camp, be during the week that she normally has it, over behind the high school, not to interfere with what is going on at the turf. So I have to have somebody move it and somebody second it. You move the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion, okay, and for discussion?
Well, I, it sounds like, in my opinion, it sounds like she jumped the gun because she, she assumed that she had a timeframe, she put out literature. Now, if she goes the same week as, is it Zach?
Yep, Zach.
They're both going to get hurt, because you're going to have two camps going on within a hundred yards of each other, and the attendance may suffer for both, so you're actually punishing him for doing things in a timely manner just because she did it in previous years, um, you know, it's, it's, if she doesn't follow through, it's not a given. I mean, if she didn't follow through and Colin held a week for her and she never, and she decided not to have a camp, then he's got an open week. So it's not his job to assume that someone's going to do this year after year, it's their job.
I would, I would agree with you, selectman Federici, except for the point that her husband did contact him.
But as Colin said, he did not know that was her husband, and he contacted her under the auspices of the Western Mess, whatever they are.
Pioneers.
Pioneers, as opposed to Jenny Mauer's husband, who's looking for this week. So he had no idea that, that, that was the concept.
Okay. You have any conversation, any discussion?
Yeah, I disagree with Mr. Federici. I think we should take care of...
Respectfully.
We, we should take care of the East Long Meadow people. If there is a mistake made, we should do something to accommodate it, because these are tax-paying people in town that are, that are helping our kids in town.
But we, we did, yeah, we did give her a week. She has a week in July, so we did accommodate her.
No, it's not in July, it's in August.
It's the last week in July that crosses over into August.
Okay. So she was accommodated even though she didn't apply on time?
Is there another, not an argument, but is there another comment?
But like I said, these kids, some of these kids are on vacation, and she can't get all the kids together other than those certain dates, because kids are here, kids are there.
Okay. Well, it, the motion has been moved and seconded, and we've had our discussion.
If I may, uh, add as well?
Oh, you may.
I think what, you know, this, this motion is going to do is it's going to stranglehold these camps. Reason being that if I have a hundred and fifty people sign up for the next level, um, soccer clinic, they're going to have to use the backfield as well as the turf. You know, so I feel that we're strangleholding this, this opportunity for the town to bring in college coaching and international coaches to our, our town. Obviously, that if, if Jenny had contacted me in January or February, it would be a very different story that we'd be dealing with right here. But she, she did contact me late. We accommodated through the recreation department. I think we've done everything that we can for that coach to, to give her an opportunity to coach here in town. You know, now I have three soccer clinics going in the same summer. So right now, all of them are going to get hurt because people are going to choose different weeks. So, I would, you know, suggest that we keep, um, Ms. Mauer at her week, because it's going to hurt what we currently have going on. It's also going to hurt her program, um, and, and really kind of, you know, diminish, you know, all of the efforts that the recreation department has put forward to, to put on this summer for these kids in town.
And I would respectfully say that, um, I feel that we did a disservice to her by not contacting her. She has been servicing our town for some years now. She is a head coach, and she deserves that respect. And I've taken what you've said under consideration. I'll move for a vote, all in favor. I, I'll oppose.
Nay.
And, and no abstentions, that passes. And any, no abstentions that passes. Um, Nick, would you notify Ms. Maurer? I'll give you the information. And thank you. So um, the other thing that we needed to talk about was with regards to coaching. When, how do you, just, and this is just for public information, how do you decide which coaches you're going to select for our soccer, whatever it is?
Um, each year, we have to solicit two hundred and seventy-five volunteer coaches. Um, so, you know, some are four-season coaches, some are uh, you know, one season, but you know, um, it was kind of astounding that we have to get that many head coaches, you know, at the helm, you know, to have our children play sports here in town. Um, so the general process is during the signup procedures, since we implemented the new cloud-based software, um, there's actually a checkbox that allows a, a parent to, you know, check the box and say, I'm interested in coaching. So every single registration um, has that checkbox that says, I'm interested in coaching. Um, so what we do is, you know, say we get, you know, fifty kids, you know, which gives us five soccer teams.
Right.
If we look down that list, if we see five parents that have checked the box, I would like to coach, um, they become the head coach of one team. We put their child on their team, if they have twins, then we put both.
Yeah.
Um, you know, then we look at all of the roster requests, and we try to, you know, make the teams even at that point, you know, by grade, by age, you know, and in some cases, skill level. We do an evaluation for our basketball program to make the teams even. Um, so that's the process there. If we don't get enough coaches, um, what we do is we email all the participants' parents and plead, beg, get on our knees, grovel, the whole deal. Um, try to say, you know, we really need your help this year, um, you know, we're low on coaches. Um, and a lot of times, we'll get like a couple that'll say, you know what, we'll coach me and this dad together, because I work Saturdays, he works Sundays, and you know, then they try to work it out, and we work with those coaches.
Okay.
Um, recently, we've, we've, uh, we have a couple of coaches out there that don't have children in our programs.
It's a wonderful problem to have.
It's not bad. It's not bad.
Yeah, they want to have people that are excited about the sport.
Yes, so um, recently, we've had a, a couple of coaches that um, have come and said, hey, if you ever need a coach, let me know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in the case of, we have one team that just doesn't have a coach, the season starts in a couple of weeks, um, we're going to go to that list. And what we'd like to, to say is that if there are coaches like that out there, like if uh, you'd like to coach, you know, you just let me know, get back on the field. Um, so we're going to ask those coaches to email me personally. We're going to put them on a, a list um, to make sure that they, they, we know that they exist, you know, for soccer and basketball, or football and baseball, you know, whatever it might be. Um, so that's the general process. But I will say that um, if we have fifty kids, five coaches, five teams, those five parents are going to get the preference, you know, because, um, you know, who wants to tell a parent they can't coach their kid if they want to?
Exactly, you want parent involvement, that's, that's, they're vested.
So what we, what we do as, as well is we also hold coaches' clinics, you know, and that's where I, I reach out to my coaches' network again, and I bring in coaches to um, teach our coaches how to coach.
Okay.
Um, so that's the general process and, and how we procure those coaches.
Fantastic. Colin, you mentioned uh, to notify you by email, since we do have it on L, yeah. Why don't you give them your email address?
So, colin.druery@eastlongmeadowma.gov.
Absolutely.
Probably the longest email ever.
Well, it is what it is. So, so, um, so Jesse, you're also, this is just this one time, because we had a little faux pas, faux pas. And so, in the, in the future, certainly, we'll go back to what your um, your way of doing business, of not having the conflicting, okay? I think everybody's available.
Just a clarification, you wanted me to notify the coach?
Um, yeah, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind, I, we'll do a letter together and send it to her.
Okay.
And also, um, can we send an email also to the A D of the high school, asking him to uh, send information to Colin with regards to, if he could um, add Colin to his C C list when he's sending out the uh, coaching changes, or the, the um, active coach list, coaching list. That way, he would have that information, and he won't be blindsided also. And I think that'll keep this from happening ever again, so, okay.
Can I see, I think I, I gotta sympathize with you for getting coaches. Uh, Karina coached a team basketball, and I help out, and I go to, I just go to watch a game in Southwood to my grandkids, and I have to end up helping my son coach, because he's a cop and he's on a night shift, so sometimes he can't make it. But, but I sympathize with you there.
That's why we usually.
You gotta beg and borrow to try to get people up.
We do.
I wanted to ask you another question. Do a background check on all these people?
Everybody, yep, and even if there's a, a parent that says, I'll volunteer if the coach isn't there, we also query them as well, so.
All right.
And we keep a, uh, we ask, we ask them to do that every single year.
Yeah.
So if they do it for spring sports, the next year comes around, they do it for spring sports again.
Oh, that's an every-year thing?
We do it every year. We're dealing with the uh, youth and families, you know, we have very young children, and we just want to make sure that uh, you know, our coaches are all, you know, what we want out there on the field.
We want to see, and I did like that um, that agreement, that you have the parents sign, so they don't, they don't go on the soccer field, uh, you know.
Try to keep them in the stands.
I was one of those parents that probably could have used that.
It's coffee time. We tell them it's coffee time, grab the Dunkin', you know.
Well, let you know, I'm, I'm a former referee, so if you need a ref for the.
There we go.
What is a herd ball, I'm the, I'm your girl.
They, they don't even have goalies yet.
No goalies.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. All right, that is it for our appointments. Okay. Um, moving on to approval of the minutes, um, open session, uh, January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Yep, I'll accept that motion. Um, and I'll second out of necessity, and that's only because you weren't here then. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, executives, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes from January twenty-first.
So move, no.
You can't move it because you weren't here yet, so, but we'll get you. Um, you move?
Two weeks, yes.
And, and so I'll second it out of necessity. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Old business, um, Board of Selectment Liaison assignments. Um, I had put it down on a little checklist and passed that out to you. Is there, are there any changes that you would like to make?
Um, just, let's see, what do we got here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just thinking, and it's fine if, you know, we're going to have, all our contracts are coming due next year.
Right.
So.
I think we're all going to do those. I think that would be in our best interest.
Oh, come on.
But no.
I did them all last year, that was more fun than a human thing should be allowed to have.
Hmm. I believe in a we thing.
You mean those little things you use?
I do, I believe in a we thing, absolutely.
Madam Chair, by any chance, do you have another copy?
Um, sure.
Or could I make one?
Share. If I could make one.
Oh, sure.
Oh, oh, no, here, you can take mine.
Thank you.
And I'll share.
Yeah, so I was just going to volunteer to either take fire or police if you wanted, but it's up to only a few.
I kinda want those two.
Okay.
Excuse me. Yeah, uh, how, how does this work? I mean, if you have an, an issue, and you come, and you have to come to the selectment, are you supposed to make an appointment, or after you have the meeting?
Yeah, you make an appointment, there, there isn't an open session.
Can I just quickly say this one thing?
No.
About this Hamden's line.
No, I'm sorry, you can't. Um, but let me, Lori is right, Lori is right in there, and you could, Lorraine, and you can make an appointment. But thank you.
All right.
I appreciate, we want to hear from you, but.
Oh, I had a, I didn't.
Okay, that's okay.
I wanted you guys to hear from me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
All right, the only, the only other one, I was thinking, I, I don't know, Billy wanted to switch, was a council on aging, but that's, once again, it's just a suggestion. But I don't know which, which was.
In, in, in light of, I, I think that one should stay too.
Okay.
Are there any ones that you want to switch off of?
No.
No, you're good?
Yeah, whatever you gave me.
Oh, whatever, well, it was a suggestion.
I mean, it's, that's fine.
It was a suggestion, suggestion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One note. I'm looking at um, item eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
The um, board has uh, also allowed for P B T A. I believe that Ms. Brennan has been the board's representative on that, so.
No, we, we're, we're, we're going to be a board that's working, so, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, so then I will entertain a, a motion to accept the reorganization. Um, oh, I apologize, um, it's on buzz, um, Board of Selectment and Liaison assignments.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have our new assignments. Nick, you'll make sure that that gets around to everyone?
Yep.
Um, municipal space study. Um, as you know, we had a meeting yesterday with uh, DPW and the um, the DPW as well as the um.
Talk about the purchasers?
And the purchasers.
I mean, the sellers.
Uh, sellers of two ninety, the probably two ninety-four North Main Street.
Two ninety-six.
Two ninety-six, thank you, I appreciate it. It's a we thing. Um, it was quite informative um, for, for me. Some of the things that we thought were going to be expenses turned out to be probably, likely to be included. However, what concerned me was um, the head of appropriations announcement um, at the end, saying that there was no money um, for either proposal. So I guess we can leave it on um, up until, on the warrant, up until that, that wonderful evening, and um, pull it if there's, if we don't have a funding source.
Uh, through the board?
Yep.
Uh, all, all due respect to Mr. Welch.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns a building, I mean.
Right.
I mean, to be fair to him, I think uh, we should let him know as soon as we can.
Right.
Because, you know, he may want to sell that building to somebody else, or have someone else.
Right.
On the line, I, I think out of, out of respect to him, you know?
I would agree.
Because he's been waiting long enough.
He has been waiting quite a while, and you know, we definitely don't want to add another burden on to our taxpayers, especially after the uh, recent tax increase. Uh, Mr. Federici, Select McGorman?
Um, I, I agree with, with uh, Bill. Um, I'm sorry, Select McGorman.
Oh, yeah.
I've known him for twenty years. But um, after that conversation yesterday, obviously, they were nice enough to uh, to concede some expenses that, that, you know, they, we originally thought we were going to have to cover. However, once again, in talking to um, the appropriations committee, their suggest, their suggestion for funding this would be a debt exclusion, which I don't think we have time before the town meeting to get that whole process done. I don't think it's fair to the town, I don't think it's fair to, as you said, the, the sellers, Mr. Welch and, and uh, Mr. LaPlante. Um, i- in a perfect world, what I'd like to see happen, and I know Bruce Feeny is here, but I, I'd love to see, see us sit back, take a breath, and maybe if we're going to look at the town hall project, bring that back in the fall meeting, you know, in the October, September um, board meeting, that way. That way, they get a chance to present their case, find out how they're going to fund it, and then, and then we can go from there. But I, it almost seems like, and it's a shame, because I was like the big champion of this whole project.
Exactly, you got us all excited and everything, yeah.
I've gone a hundred and eighty degrees, so it's, you know.
Things do change, and, and with, as we get more information, how, um, I guess I would caution this to, uh, to thinking that um, that the DPW proposal would be the only proposal in the House. I would think that we want to look at that and try to make it our own also, um, which Mr. Feeny has said that he would be more than willing to do. But also, um, there are some other ideas that have come up, and we should look at those as well. So I guess I'm, I'm, it sounds like we're in agreement on this, so I will entertain a motion. Do we need, woo, woo, whoa, back up.
I apologize for interrupting, but to see about.
We'll let you this one time.
Thank you. Um, I hope until at least the next topic.
Until the next time, yeah.
Thank you.
Make a smile.
Uh, with the situation here for the, for the property, this is still under consideration really as a bid. So, um, I would recommend to the board to uh, decide whether or not you want to make an award of a bid, or if you want to reject both bids and consider the uh, process closed. And that would, that would satisfy that. Also, one other comment I would make is, and I'm, from what I'm hearing from the discussion from the board, the purchase of this is something that is likely not going to be presented to town meeting pending your vote. In speaking with the reminder yesterday, because we are in that warrant process getting everything together, um, there's a possibility that the article could be removed entirely from publication. That's something that is in the next portion of the, the next topic with the warrant articles.
Okay.
So, keeping those topics in, in mind, that may affect your motion.
Um, but my, I'll, well, let me ask this. Um, Bruce, is the other article also from DPW going to be pulled as well?
I can't speak for the board.
You can't speak for the board. Okay, all right, okay. Well, hearing, hearing, eh, no, it wasn't that. So hearing that, so I guess the process with regards, if we accept the bid, then we still have to find the funding. And it still puts Mr. Um, Welch on the hook for holding out for us, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
And I guess we have to step up to the plate and just, the, my understanding, um, after speaking with um, a DPW agent and uh, Mr. Feeny, is that they will be pulling theirs as well, so perhaps we should, I guess.
And, and the, the board could keep the article on there.
Okay.
Uh, like I said, it was something in going through with the reminder as part of the process yesterday. I said, you know, there was discussion, and, and my understanding was that if there was, well, my, I asked them. I said, if the board takes a vote to not do this, is it possible to maybe pull the article entirely? And the answer was yes. I'd have to let them know today.
I, I guess, guess my feeling is, and I certainly will ask my board members to chime in, if we're not going to award the bid, and, and we've just, if we decide to do that, then it would make sense to take it off the warrant article. Select McGorman?
I definitely agree. I think we should pull them. Out of, out of courtesy to the, the taxpayers of the town, and out of courtesy to Mr. Welch. I, I don't think it's right to keep them on there when we know and we can't fund them. And uh, you know, I think, um, Select McGorman Federici said, I think we should, you know, put it on at a later time. Because I, I, I just think it was bad timing with people getting the tax.
Exactly, right.
And, and then, I think it's our obligation to take them off there, knowing it can't happen.
Exactly. I'll, Select McGorman Federici.
Well, I don't want to, once again, I, I agree completely, and I, as, as Bill said, I want to thank, we started this process in the fall, and I really want to thank the LaPlants, um, because they have hung in there with us, and we've still, you know, there's been times where we're sort of, and I don't say dragged our feet, but they haven't been able to get answers, just because we haven't had answers.
Had answers, right.
So it's, it was very nice of them to, you know, to work with us, and, because I think I know where the, the way this vote's going to go, so.
Yeah.
I just want to thank them for, uh, you know, for, for their consideration in this whole process, and uh, and, you know, wish them luck with the building.
Yeah, and I would agree with what uh, Select McGorman Federici has uh, so eloquently said. So at this point, we have to close the bid first.
Well, I've.
Are we on another article?
No, we're, we're not, but it, well, the comment that.
Oh, that's right.
You said, not till the next topic, but anyway, I'm sorry.
The, the, just two comments I would like to make to the board, to Select McGorman's point about if this bid is rejecting the bid processes, if the bids are rejected and then the bid process is closed. Um, if the board is looking to purchase municipal space and maybe put something on for the uh, special, for a special town meeting or an annual, whether or not this property would be uh, in play is subject to a whole additional bid process. So there's no guarantee that this particular pro, building would be respond, would be a response.
Back to us.
And um, the, the other comment was, my understanding is that um, the Board of Public Works article will stay on there, and they will make a determination by, you know, before town meeting as to whether or not to take action on it. They, they may very well take, uh, but it's my understanding that it's going to be published.
Okay, um, then I have, I have a, something also that I would like to be considered. If, if for some reason, which I don't believe it will be, um, if it is still on there and they take action, I would um, not be in support of another building um, going forward with this um, town meeting. And I certainly will can hear from each of our selectmen. We'll start with Select McGorman Federici.
You mean another building, like a separate building?
No, if they were talking about uh, the improvements to the building, and their article were to stay on um, for the town meeting in uh, May, I would not be in support, I would not be able to support it.
Okay.
At this time. But certainly, we can take that up for a vote as to what we would do, certainly if we're pulling ours.
Well, I think that's not our warrant item, so we don't vote to take it off, right?
No, 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 we wouldn't vote to take it off, it's just a vote of whether or not we're supporting it.
Yeah, yeah.
At town meeting.
And that will be part of the next topic discussion of recommendations or none at time of print.
Okay, all right, so first of all, we need to close the bid, if I hear you correctly.
Yes.
Just to make sure we are doing things in a proper fashion, I am going to check, excuse me, check in with council. Everything okay up to date, right now?
Up to date.
Right now, okay. Thank you very much for your stamp of approval, it's always appreciated. Okay, so right now I will entertain a motion to close the, close the bid and reject both bids.
So move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Your motion to reject both bids is inclusive. I assume that in the best interest of the community, determined it is appropriate to reject both bids.
Just what he said. It is appropriate to reject both bids, because if we don't have the funding, I think it's irresponsible for us to try to move forward. Debt exclusion, I think we all agree, is just not an option, especially with the towns being what they were. If money were no object, certainly we could move forward. So, we have a motion, it has been moved and seconded, we've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so both bids have been rejected. So now I will entertain a motion to remove our, our warrant, our, excuse me, our motion from the warrant article.
So move, second it.
Any discussion?
Just trying to figure out which article it was, just so we get a number.
I believe that's nineteen.
Okay, hearing, no discussion, it's been moved and seconded to remove Article nineteen.
Yeah.
Article nineteen. It will be, let's clean it up. So, we're requesting, making a motion to remove Article nineteen, which is with, in reference to us purchasing a building. Do I need to read that into record?
I think you could just summarize.
Summarize, okay. It's asking for permission to, I think it's one point two million. I'll entertain that motion.
So move.
So move.
Second it.
And seconded, any more further discussion?
One point, by removing Article nineteen, you will then in effect move the Board of Public Works article up one, it will become the new Article nineteen.
Okay, and everything else will be moved up as well?
Right.
Does that need to be in the motion?
No, it's just a point for the board.
Point of reference, okay, fantastic, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll remove that warrant article. So, do you want to go through now and talk about the, what we're recommending or not recommending?
I would ask that the board to, yes, take a look at that and go through it, article by article. Really, there's only two, I believe, that the board would recommend, and the rest the board would be sponsors for. So, those don't necessarily need a vote, but it's just to go through the warrant, and I would just bring to the board's attention, if you're not aware, that the moderator is present for the meeting.
Yes, greetings and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields, is there anything that you would like to say? Would you like to join us on this piece?
I'd be happy to, but I have nothing to say.
Thank you, well, that's okay. You might feel so inspired. Welcome.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going through the articles, so Article one is nothing, Article two is nothing, Article three, where do we start, Nick?
It would be Article four, right, Article one is for reports of the town, Article two is the budget, Article three is the capital plan.
Okay.
The version of the warrant that you have today is the one that was worked, was sent over to reminder last night. It included updated language in the capital planning article. We're still waiting for certain language on the financials. But starting with Article four, that is an article that the Board of Selectmen presents, sponsors.
One moment, just a pause. Selectman Federici, you have that look in your eyes.
It's not that deer in a headlights. I was just thinking, as we go through these, do we want to say who's gonna, who's gonna give each article?
We might as well do that, too.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Let me, can I just rewind here for a minute? Selectman Federici, I know there were some that you definitely wanted to do, so which ones?
Well, this one in particular is, that I want to do is the parade.
What number?
Seventeen, I believe.
Yes, seventeen.
Number seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. Number seventeen, why can't I find it?
I copied these, I've got a page for it.
Page seven.
Thank you. Okay, that's Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem, is there, are there any warrants articles that you want to?
No.
That you have a preference to, okay. All right, so that, with that said, okay, let's... That's the, that's, that's his baby.
That's the only specific one.
And so we'll go through and speak up, and we'll try to make sure that it's even. If it comes out to be uneven, we'll just research it a little bit further at a later time. Okay, so you are at Article four?
Article four would be the first one that the board would present.
Okay.
And that is to allocate money to, transfer money to the stabilization fund.
Okay. Paul?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Five is to transfer money to the pension reserve fund, or raise and appropriate or transfer money to the pension reserve fund.
Okay.
I'll take that one too.
Okay.
Because they're all, you know, they're all similar, so.
Okay. Eight, okay. And I guess I'll take...
Six is for transfer from, let's see, interdepartmental transfers for FY fourteen.
Okay.
That's, a large part of that will be snow and ice transfers, my understanding.
Okay.
And some for insurance as well.
If I made through the chair, when that's, when this official warrant item's given, it's gonna have, what's I mistaken? Does it identify each transfer, yeah, by account number from, with the general fund to, or...
Yes, so, through the chairman, Selectman Federici's correct, what'll actually happen is, the warrant is your document letting everybody in town know what the articles will be. The motions and what I'll be working on after the warrant's been finalized through the reminder will be a bit of a program for everyone to work off of. It'll have who's presenting which articles, and then motions will be made for each article, which will include a lot of the language, but it'll be presented in such a way that when it comes to transfers, it will say from, from budget line item XX to budget line item, whatever it is.
I don't mind taking that one, but I also would say, can we have those, the scripts sooner than later? Getting that one right before the meeting, when, in my freshman year, was not right, and I would never do that to you, Billy. Selectman Billy. Selectman Gorman.
So are you taking six?
Yeah, I'll take six. All right.
Number six.
Yeah. Number seven, I'll take that one, and then the next one is...
Article...
Which one?
Chapter nine.
Right, chapter, Article eight is a Board of Public Works article, so they will present that.
Okay, nine?
So, nine, it's my understanding, this is the first of the two establishing a water enterprise fund, and ten is the sewer enterprise fund. And just a note here, again for the board, is to take, to note that this will establish them, but they won't really be in effect until July one of 2015 for both articles. However, all of the transfers that have been discussed to date will still be able to be in effect for...
And there are still some things that I think warrant a discussion for, with regards to what's going to be transferred, et cetera. But I think because Selectman Federici had worked very closely with him, I would prefer that he take that one if he has no objection.
I don't, but my question is, are we proposing this or Board of Public Works?
It's, my understanding that the, from the meeting yesterday and other discussions, is that the Board of Selectmen is going to present it.
Okay.
Yeah, they want us to present it.
And then Board of Public Works will come up and talk a little bit about it, but then the auditor, Mr. Scanlon or representative, will be there to go into detail.
Okay, all right, so I'll do nine and ten then.
You do nine, are they both the same?
Well, if one's water, one's sewer.
All right, that makes sense, okay, so you're done. All the rest are going to...
Stick it for it.
Okay, yeah, okay. The local cable rear establishment, that'll be Billy, is that okay? That's eleven?
Yep.
Selectman Gorman, excuse me. Twelve, Selectman Gorman? Did you want to say something to that?
For eleven and twelve, well, for eleven, it's an annual article to establish the revolving fund for a local cable access television. The amount that you see there, the hundred thirty-two thousand, that is a cap that is established. And so that is in line with the budget submitted by Mr. Mackey in this case. It needs to be established annually, and so this is an annual article. Similarly, Article twelve does the same thing for center school park revolving. It has to do with cultural council and the Little Red Schoolhouse expenses relative to that.
So you're okay with that one then? All right. Carry on?
Thirteen is a similar article, it's for the solid waste disposal revolving fund. And to establish this fund, monies used out of this fund go for things, for example, to support the pay-as-you-throw program. And anything related to the trash program. That would be...
Actually, I wouldn't mind having that one, though. Well, we'll work it out, we'll give it to you for now, but I think I would like that one. Okay, go ahead, number fourteen?
Similarly, this is an annual revolving fund article for the council on aging. The cap, as I understand it, is going to be set at a hundred and twenty thousand for this year. And this goes to support various programming at the council on aging.
Billy, can we switch those? I'll take thirteen, you take fourteen?
Yeah.
Since you are the liaison for that.
Sixteen...
Fifteen.
Pardon me?
That's all right, oh, no, you're right, you were right, I was wrong.
Fifteen is...
And I said it on camera.
I jumped the gun, I think.
It's okay.
Fifteen is a revolving fund for the library, an annual article, and the Board of Library Trustees will present that one.
Okay.
Sixteen is an article that council has talked with the board about establishing formally the Recreation Department Revolving Fund, and the language is somewhat different than the other revolving funds. Perhaps I could have council discuss a little bit more if the board needs to, but...
I would...
There's no dollar figure for this, it's a little bit of a difference. It's establishing the fund officially, because in practice it has been, there has been a fund that has acted as that revolving fund. What will happen is, if there are funds there, they are proposed to be dissolved upon a transfer into the newly established, officially established revolving fund. Revolving funds carry on from fiscal year to fiscal year. So, the money that is in there would go into this newly established, officially established Recreation Department Revolving Fund.
Questions?
Just a few.
The difference between this fund and the other ones that you've just been discussing is that this revolving fund is set up under a different statute, has a little bit different function. The restrictions as part of this fund are that it only receives monies from participants of activities that are being put on by the Recreation Department.
Okay.
And the monies that are received are used to refurbish the program for the following year. For example, scheduled trips to educational recreational sites like Look Park or Boston Museum, where the children would pay a fee for the operation or rental of buses. That money would go into the revolving fund and be used to pay the fee, pay the emission costs, pay drivers for the buses.
Okay.
And, but it cannot be used to pay salaries of any employees or not. Whereas, some salaries can be paid under the other revolving funds. This is the original revolving fund adopted by the state, and the other ones were set up under a different statute later on. But this is the statute that the board has recommended that be used with respect to the Recreation Department. Also, any expenditures from the fund require that the requests for the expenditures be submitted to the board for approval.
Okay, got it, all right. Any questions from the...
That would be Selectman Gorman?
Yes, Selectman Gorman.
Seventeen was Selectman Federici?
Sixteen.
Sixteen was Selectman Gorman?
No, fifteen was Selectman Gorman.
Fifteen's Board of Library Trustees.
Oh, Lord have mercy, yeah.
Sixteen, what?
I'm awake.
Sixteen is yours.
He's right again, twice. So, you're sixteen, seventeen is you, sir. Selectman Federici. Okay.
Eighteen is an article that will be presented by the Community Preservation Committee. This is an annual article that they use to set up their different funds for that money. The percentages you see will be whatever the taxes that are collected on that, along with the matching from the state, and they would be distributed within these accounts according to those percentages. This has been the standard, I think, since the committee and the act were adopted and established. So it will be presented by the Community Preservation Committee, and there is a space for the Board of Selectmen for a recommendation. So the recommendation could be recommended, not recommended, or, I would, if their board's undecided today, I would recommend that you say no recommendation at time of print.
Entertain, any discussion? Any feelings drawn one way or another?
This is, I believe we do this on an annual basis, so it's not, it's the theoretical, no heavy lifting, so I have no problem recommending it.
Okay. All right, then. Can we get a little more information?
Certainly, but I do need a recommendation one way or another today.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we recommended at this time.
So move.
Second it.
Okay, I moved and a second, any further discussion? I would just say that I would like a little more information, but I'm going to lean on our senior, senior selectman. And so, all in favor?
That's in experience only, not age.
Experience, right, exactly. Well, I don't know, it might be age, too, but a good woman never tells. So, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna move to recommend that. Okay, the next one is...
Article, the current Article nineteen has been removed by the board that was the municipal space purchase, referring to the numbers as they are in this warrant for the time being. Article twenty is the renovations article. The language, as of yesterday when the board met, has changed. If I...
Sure.
Just want to point out that maybe if the board want to read it into the record...
Feel free to read it in.
Read it into the record.
Sure, please.
The language, it now reads, again, this will be Article nineteen once it's adjusted.
Okay.
To see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to pay for infrastructure improvements to town hall, including electrical switchgear and panel upgrades, and pass any vote or take any other action relative thereto. That phrase, renovations to town hall, should be stricken. And this is for proposed thirty thousand dollars. So this will be sponsored and presented by the Board of Public Works, and does request a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. So this will be sponsored and presented by the Board of Public Works and does request a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
I guess we'll have. I'll entertain a motion not to recommend this. I need to have somebody to approve it or.
So moved.
So moved, and then the second? Do I have a second?
Discussion first.
Second?
Second.
Now discussion. Federici, Selectman Federici first, and then to Selectman Gorman.
So the dollar values must change to thirty thousand dollars?
The, that was the figure that was given to me in the written, yes.
Okay, what's your language?
That was given to me yesterday.
So they're doing the minimum repairs to Town Hall that's needed, it sounds like, and it doesn't sound like they're, I don't wanna read into things, but it doesn't sound like they're moving forward with the whole project until a later date. That's, that would be my.
Through the chairman, my, what, what I heard yesterday is that the Board of Public Works is considering a few different options to present to the town and may be able to, but is asking only for this amount. So that they may do more renovations or present that, but that would be done through other, other funding, other budgeting rather.
And one of the things that they had mentioned that they were going to also try to go through capital to get this done. Because they said that the, the electrical piece, they've been trying to get it done for a couple of years. It's been on capital for a few years and it hasn't been able to be done. So, excuse me, one moment, please. Give me one minute. So Nick, so the thirty thousand dollars is just gonna cover the electrical upgrade? And what are the others?
Was it infrastructure? What did you read?
It says infrastructure, electrical, switchgear and panel upgrades. But again, they presented, there were a few different things that were presented as possibilities. But this was what was given to me during the meeting.
Electrical upgrades.
In German.
Yes.
That, that is just for the electrical, that thirty thousand. They had three different things that cost more, but the thirty thousand was strictly for the electrical panels because that's where we're in trouble. Because if one of the circuit breakers goes.
That's right.
We can't replace it. You can't get it nowhere, so you have to, it's kind of an emergency thing, really.
Yeah. Okay. We're still in discussion. I would recommend that we vote no on this, this and have another motion to follow. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, aye. Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Are you, which way, nay?
Nay.
Nay, I'm sorry. I know, I don't mean to do that. The motion is not carried, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the thirty thousand dollars for the upgrade to the electrical system in the town. Because that motion was defeated.
That was to not, not recommend.
Not recommend, so we're not recommending it.
This would be a motion.
But we didn't vote that in.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote, we didn't vote to not recommend it. So now we're.
Recommend.
We're entertaining a motion to recommend the thirty thousand dollars for the electrical upgrades.
So moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will start. I didn't underst, I thought this was mostly for the building as opposed to the electrical upgrades, which are something that are very necessary in the Town Hall. It was explained to us yesterday that if our, our breakers are so outdated that if it should go down, they would not be able to replace it and somebody would have to go without electricity. So I do apologize for that misunderstanding on my part, trying to rectify it. I'm glad we've moved on with a different motion. Is there any discussion from Selectman Federici? Selectman Gorman? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So the vote is to recommend the thirty thousand dollars for the electrical upgrades. Okay.
That will be.
Actually, that's the Board of Public Works.
That's Board of Public Works, yeah. Yeah, they do that one.
Madam Chair, if I could run through the list of what I have for who is presenting?
Please.
Article four and five, Selectman Federici. Articles six and seven, Chairman Thorpe. Articles nine and ten, Selectman Federici. Articles eleven, twelve, eleven and twelve, Selectman Gorman. Article thirteen, Selectman Thorpe, Chairman Thorpe. Article fourteen and sixteen, Selectman Gorman. Article seventeen, Selectman Federici. Article nineteen has been removed. And then from article, the, the rest of the articles are either from the Planning Board or petitioned articles. And it looks like the warrant will be thirty-three articles this year.
Okay. Where's the one with the taking of the streets?
That would start, let me see.
Article thirty-one.
Article, current thirty-one.
Current thirty-one. Okay. And there with me?
Did you wanna read that one?
I absolutely did. All of those degrees, how could I, you know?
Actually, that's sponsored by a petitioner, right?
It is, it is.
They all are.
They all are. So we are, well, wait a minute. Mr. Federici, you have five. Well, I want one of yours. And that'll give me four. And you'll still have.
Give it all, huh?
We'll work it out. No, that's okay, Selectman Gorman. Anyway, we're good.
I would make a comment just with the, with the warrant articles for the street takings. Should Town Meeting approve those? It's an, it's an action that authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take further actions. What will happen is for each one of those that is approved, they will come to the board as soon as possible at the subsequent meeting where I believe for each of those, those will need to be read aloud into the record at a Board of Selectmen meeting because it will say, on such and such a date, such action was taken. And so forth. So there will be an opportunity to read those articles.
Be careful what you wish for, right? Tell me something, have those, those articles, have those streets already been, you may not know this. Have those streets already been brought up to code by, according to DPW standards?
It's my understanding that no article would appear on the warrant.
There will be a report either in favor or against acceptance of these streets given by Board of Public Works and the Planning Board, since these are privately petitioned articles, which will address those questions.
Okay, great. Okay.
I would just add to that. It's also my understanding that they would, there must have been some preliminary review anyway about that.
Well, I, I think if a, if a, if a citizen gets so many signatures, they can put what they want on the warrant. So we have no way of knowing if that was the situation, if it was signature. But with that report, and that report's coming from?
Both the Planning Board should be reporting that the streets were built in accordance with the subdivision control requirements and the Board of Public Works saying that physically the construction meets their specifications.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I guess we need to sign the warrant.
I would just advise the board that there are, I believe, eight signature pages for the board to sign of the warrant. And the reason for that is because the clerk will take, once it's all finalized, will take those and post those throughout town in at least six, well, four is the minimum, but he does, I believe, six locations of them. So that's why I have so many, plus a couple for the file.
Okay. Fantastic. With, excuse me, before we move on, is there anything that you would like to say?
Only to remind you that I'll be taping the preview for the Town Meeting. Coming Monday.
Alright.
And one or all of you are welcome to participate. It's an opportunity to explain to the voters what they're gonna be asked to act upon at the Town Meeting. And it's informal. It's not, it's just intended to be educational, so I hope someone, a representative of the board can be there to participate.
Absolutely. Now, just for our freshman selectman here, where is that going to take place at?
It will be taped at the Elcat Studios, which are in the high school, back in the building.
On what day?
It's Monday and it begins, I believe, at six-thirty. I sent a rough schedule out to each of you, so I don't recall precisely, but I can follow up if you, if you didn't get it. And it, it shouldn't take long.
I bet the board shouldn't.
Your, your, your part of it should not take long. There may be others that will go longer.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, through the chair, historically, we used to, we usually do whichever ones we signed up for, so. And I'll talk to John because I won't be here Monday night, so check, catch up with you Tuesday or something. I'll catch up with you Tuesday or something to get it done.
You know, don't vacations just get in the way.
No, work gets in the way.
Work gets in the way, okay. It happens. Life is funny that way. Okay. Alright, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Until that day.
Till then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Always nice to have visitors. Okay, two thousand fifteen budgets. Uh, Nick?
I, Madam Chair, I'd put this on really simply as a carryover item to see if the board had anything that it wished to discuss.
I, I do. There are some upgrades in some of the budgets that I noticed for positions that would require a regrade. I'm requesting that all of them be removed if it is so the pleasure of our board and we get a sense of where we are with tho, with those removals. Also, we were looking for the blackboard to be funded. But my understanding is with the savings that we had with the, with the hiring of the new person at a, at a, at a, at a lower rate, that just about pays for the black connect. So what do we have to do to have that money moved so that that can be done?
Well, if you're.
So that that money can be used for the connect? Blackboard connect.
If you're, if you're saying that because of the hire and keeping in mind that at some point next year, there would be a step increase that would need to be built into the budget because the employee will be part, whatever step they're on as of their first day of work, on that anniversary date, they would increase a step, so there will be an increase of their salary before the end of the fiscal year. Okay, but keeping that in mind, figuring, calculating that, if you're saying that the funding for the blackboard connect could be covered. I think it's a matter of the board advising the IT director to allocate that difference in funding to fund the blackboard connect.
Okay, does that need, that need to be voted on by the board, I would assume?
I, I think that's at the board.
To take that direction? I, I would prefer to, to take that as, as a vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Also assuming that the, that the salary, well, assuming that that is the difference.
Okay, but whatever the difference is to move it towards the black, to release it so that we can use it towards the blackboard connect. I got a feeling with those other releases, we might have enough to do that.
I think the figure was eleven thousand dollars.
But we also have those figures for those upgrades that have not been approved by us. Any upgrades need to come, regrades need to come before the board, correct?
Madam Chair, I think you're talking about a totally different apartment.
Yes, I am. But it's all one, it's all taxpayers' money.
Well, I'm not disputing that, Madam Chair. What I'm saying is the two different apartment budgets don't crisscross. And what, within, within, what I mean by that is you have one department with those proposed regrades. They were going to be, in their budget, they were going to be over such that there was a proposal to close portions of the time or restrict hours of an employee within that department. So they, and they would also be well over that one percent, so they would have to restrict it to get to the one percent. The IT budget, it's not a matter of transferring that funding over to the IT department. It wouldn't, it doesn't work that way because the proposal is already over the one percent.
The proposal for the IT department is over?
I believe it, I believe you're referring to the clerk's office with a, with a proposed regrade for a position there. And I think that figure was, that figure alone for that one regrade was some around four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars, forty-one hundred dollars. But to say, okay, we'll look at the overall budget and I appreciate what you're, what you're saying.
Yeah, 'cause I figured four thousand here, eight thousand there, that's twelve thousand. That's eleven thousand that we need.
Well.
And I know I'm simplifying it.
It's looking at a.
I'm gonna ask Selectman Federici to, I wanna let you continue then. Selectman Federici has given me the look, so I know he has something to say. So go ahead. And I respect.
All I would say is I, I would, I would ask the board to consider each department on its, on its own in, in this case because it's two different issues and it's not like the clerk's office was, has this extra money under a one percent. The other aspect is, I don't know, I'm assuming that with the IT department, if there is a difference in the salary that was projected for the hire. That is eleven thousand dollars, which is the cost for the blackboard connect service for the year, my understanding. If there's that gap, then that keep, then yes, the IT department could switch it from that position into the, and keep with, under the one percent.
Okay, so, but what if it's not the total eleven thousand? Could that, what the, what the remainder, the difference, could that be presented? And we could try to find the three thousand dollars or whatever the difference is between what the savings in that department and what the blackboard connect would cost? Can we figure that out another way?
It's my understanding that no department is showing a, anything under than the one percent.
Right.
So.
There are, I do believe, I guess my question would be, I wanna make sure that there aren't any upgrades or regrades that are in any of the other budgets. I guess that would be the first thing that I would like to see. If there are, they need to be taken out.
There, there aren't. The, to my knowledge, it's only the clerk's office had, had the one. There aren't any other, through the Board of Selectmen departments that I'm aware of that, that through the budget process, no.
Okay. Selectman Federici?
I was just thinking that if, well, first of all, does it, we never voted on the regrade for the?
No.
Okay.
We did not.
Second thing is, my thought process is obviously if that saves X amount of dollars, four thousand dollars, that goes towards, because it's in that budget, that goes towards the fact that they're shutting down early on certain days. You know, in other words, it's, it's picking up that gap as opposed to taking it and putting it somewhere else. I mean, that's, you know. I thought the same way.
Yeah, 'cause I was, I'm trying to find the money so that we're not going to the taxpayer.
Well, I'm thinking of item thirteen as we get up to there with the thirty-four hundred dollars of savings from the workman's comp. I don't know where that money can go, you know? Maybe we can use that towards that.
Okay, well, you know, so, so I guess all that to say, I, do we need a motion to ask the IT director to reallocate that? A motion of support from the board members, I guess I should, should ask.
Madam Chair, I would advise the board that yes, if the board would like to see that done, that taking a vote would, would be a good step for the board to take. But also maybe have some discussion about if it doesn't meet that full amount. So what I think the board would be asking him to do would be to allocate whatever that difference is, if it's eleven thousand dollars, so much the better. But if it's an amount less than that, still put that in that line item, but know that he'll be carrying that there and it may not get expended because no other funding is identified. That would be one comment. The other thing, just going back with the clerk, I guess the point is the proposed regrade didn't, did not fit within the one percent. So it's not like you can take that amount and put it over to the.
Put it someplace else. I did. I, I did. I get, I got it. Between you and Selectman Federici. I appreciate your efforts. And I mean that. It sounded a little flip, but I meant that. So I will entertain a motion to direct our IT director to transfer? Is that the correct? Or, or start the process to make sure that the difference between the salary for the IT, current IT hire be put into a line item for the blackboard connect, understanding that it may not be. be put into a line item for the blackboard connect, understanding that it may not be the eleven thousand. And if so, it would be sitting there, um, and, and we would be looking for other funding sources.
I was just thinking you'd repeat that, but I won't, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, they make me sweat here, I tell ya, I tell ya.
Trying to make it laugh, that's why.
So, yes.
A follow-up, was there, uh, a desire on the board's part to take a vote about the, no, regrades? Did, I, I don't recall if you did.
Okay. Um, uh, any, um, I'll entertain a motion to decline any regrades that are in the current, um, budget cycle.
FY fifteen.
FY, FY fifteen.
So moved.
So moved. This is, any regrades that were placed into budgets prior to our approval, which they're not supposed to do anyway.
Okay.
Um, so we're saying that it's not gonna happen.
Okay.
So, second, um, uh, any, um, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Nick, you'll notify, okay.
I'll notify both, um, department heads.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. I received a notice from, uh, it's wonderful to have people stepping up to the plate. My understanding is there is currently one position open on the board, uh, Conservation Commission. I would entertain a motion, um, to accept Michael Carabetta's, um, request to be placed on the, uh, Conservation, uh, Commission.
Carabetta?
Carabetta, Michael Carabetta.
Yeah, Ryan Quimby here.
I thought it was Quimby.
It was Michael Car- well, there were two, and my recommendation is for Michael Carabetta. And so can we, if we move it, we can have a discussion certainly. Yep, I need somebody to move it.
So moved.
Okay, move in a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, well, I was just curious as to why we have information on Ryan and not Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, the letter came to me and I did not copy it. Um, and I apologize for that, but, um, he did send in a letter also, and there's only one opening. Um, I guess I, I would, I, I, it's nice to have this problem. My understanding from the, um, information that Nick gave me, that there will be, soon to be another opening. Um, that board, that board is kinda like changing, it's morphing. And so certainly if, uh, Mr. Quimby was still interested at that time, certainly that would be great. Right now, uh, Mr. Quimby is on that parade committee and I think he is going to have his hands full and his feet full right now. And so, I've, um, we've made a motion, it's been, uh, moved and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All, okay, any opposition? And so that passes and I certainly thank, thank you for the, um, consideration. Um, and people trying to step up. There is also one other, and I don't see it in here, so I'm going to do it now since we're doing the boards. Also, uh, Michael Cor- Carabetta had, um, put in an interest, expressed an interest in being on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which has an opening as well. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second, okay, and discussion?
Well, as you said with Ryan about being overly, you know, having a lot to do, I don't see why we're putting the same person on all these different committee, commission, you know, committees, he's already on the, um,
Planning Board.
Planning Board, he's, now he's on Conservation, so I think it's better to have, spread the wealth, if you will, that way, um, that way, if, if one person's out or one person can't make it, you're not crippling three boards or three different groups, that's just my opinion.
Uh, no, no, and, and, and so appreciated. The Zoning Board of Appeals, um, ha- kinda works hand in hand with the Planning Board. So that, and that's why I would, I think that that's a match, um.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, uh, one clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Carabetta, uh, is currently an associate member on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
This would appoint him as a full-time member to that board.
Okay, so he's already on there, so he's already doing it.
And just the only other question is, obviously this didn't make our agenda, so I was just wondering, A, why, and B, you know?
Well, it actually was supposed to be on, um, boards, I don't know, I did, uh, tell Nick about it and maybe it's on the next page, let me check. No, I did notify Nick, oh, the, there, it is. Nope, it's not. It, I guess he considered that to be under boards and commissions, maybe he considered it all to be the same thing. Okay, so we've had a, um, a motion that's been moved and seconded, um, now we've had our discussion. Is there something that you would like to say? I'm sorry.
No, come on, stop.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposition? Okay, and thank you for, for the, uh, discussion, gentlemen. Um, the next one is eleven, the notification of the MIAA, uh, dividend award comp, or workers' comp in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars to be applied to FYI fourteen, workers' comp billing. Please explain that, Mr. Nick Bro.
Um, MIAA are the town's insurance carrier, Mass. and local insurance, uh, agency, um, has awarded dividends and, uh, in the form, well, it has awarded dividends, and so we've received thirty-four hundred dollars or eligible to receive that to apply towards our workers' comp, uh, premium. So, uh, the, uh, town accountant has made the request for, uh, the form of a check, uh, to be applied towards that account.
Okay, all right. Um, next we have the, uh, Charter of Communication two thousand thirteen Annual Financial Report, which I have reviewed, um, any questions on that? I, I think also we should put that on the, um, next agenda because we just got it and there was, just in case we have any questions. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move that forward, okay, Nick? Thank you. Okay, dental plan, recommendations from IAC, um, would that be Corinne Trangizi coming up?
Whoa. Effectively giving her the warning off.
I was wondering when you guys were gonna hit that and push me to the top.
Well, here you are.
You know, well, you know.
You're kinda stuck here until you make this decision.
Oh, are we really?
It's, it's last minute, I realize it's last minute.
It sure is.
Um.
Okay, but it happens.
Nobody's real fault, other than MetLife came in with these unbelievable rates.
Mm-hmm.
And then we wanted to meet with the IAC because there were a few issues, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Networks, things like that that would affect the employees, and since it's a hundred percent employee paid, we definitely wanted their input on it.
Okay, and just for, uh, our listening audience, the IAC is what?
Insurance Advisory Committee.
Thank you. And also for me too. Okay.
Madam Chair, just a little bit more, if I could, uh, Insurance Advisory Committee is one that meets on a as-needed basis. Um, it's represented by all of the unions, and so Corinne, uh, had suggested that we work on getting that. Recall that this was, um, something that Corinne came in with late in the meeting on April eleventh.
Right.
Um, anyway, she, uh, she felt it was a good idea to get this board involved, it is a hundred percent employee paid. It is proposing a new carrier, and so there's union reps from, uh, well, all the union, re- unions were notified. And we had probably about a seventy percent turnout.
Yeah, I would like to applaud them because they seem very interested and very encouraged by the idea that they had input in it and they were gonna be allowed to be, speak on behalf of the employees.
Okay.
You had representation there from, uh, uh, police, fire, the teachers' union, par- par- union.
Parents. Cafeteria.
Yeah, so.
As well as, um, retirees.
Yeah, retirees.
Sorry, Nick.
Okay, and what did they say?
Um, it really was unanimous, I believe it was unanimous, but it was very quick. We went outside to let them have a little bit of a talk, a little discussion, and they came right back with, yes, they think that we should go ahead with the proposed change. Um, there was a little bit of back and forth with MetLife, you know, because first it was, um, benefit, benefit, comparable benefits. And then we're like, well, you know, we want a little bit more, and then they came in, I mean, the family rate is coming in considerably cheaper. In Altus's defense, they did say they would keep the rates at, they were with no increases and absorb the two percent, um, Amer- Affordable Care Act fees and everything else that they were working into their increase before.
Okay, what is Altus at right now?
Altus right now is for the active employee plan, the family plan is one hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents.
Per month?
Per month.
Okay, and what is MetLife coming in with?
MetLife is coming in with a, um, premium for the family plan of one sixteen oh one.
Okay, and, and they're-
So it's approximately twenty dollars.
And they're all the same services?
Service for service, they're matching with as good as benefit or better. Uh, where the difference is, the network is not quite the same, and how MetLife explained it, and the representative did come in and explain it to, at the meeting with the, in Insurance Advisory Committee. And, um, he said, you know, it's not as much accessibility as it is affordability, but accessibility, you can go to any dentist you want.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you use their in-network providers, you get deep discounts. So you get more bang for your buck
Okay.
at the in-service network providers. Um, they will cover you out of network, and they went as high as what they used was the ninety-ninth, um, PPO, which is for, um, usual and customary charge, reasonable customary charges.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they take in the area, if a dentist is charging, one out of every hundred dentists may charge more than what they consider to fall under the ninety-ninth UCR.
Okay.
Um, this is what they're telling us.
Mm-hmm.
We, um, we have no reason to doubt them at this moment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the Insurance Advisory Committee representatives, uh, thought it was a very good idea. And because of that, though, because you don't get the discounts in the out-of-network providers, and a lot of our dentists that our town employees use are out of network.
Oh, they are?
However, there's a number of dentists that are out of our network right now as well, that town employees are still going to.
Mm-hmm.
I find people are very loyal to the dentists.
Oh, you, you, you bet. I'm sorry.
It's a hard one to get people to change.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, what MetLife did was they increased our maximum benefit from two thousand dollars per person to twenty-five hundred dollars per person.
Mm-hmm.
So that's to kinda offset some of those additional charges you're gonna get by going out of network, so you'll, you-
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, if, uh, just add a little bit, just to give a brief example, uh, on that, if, um, you know, so if you go to your dentist who happens to be out of network and they charge a hundred and fifty, and whereas, uh, MetLife dentist in network might charge a hundred, that hundred and fifty gets applied towards the twenty-five hundred instead of the hundred for the course of the year. Um, but that said, using example numbers, if that was the price of your cleanings, it's likely ninety-nine times out of a hundred that that's gonna be a usual and customary charge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you won't see anything necessarily out of pocket on that, but it will affect the maximum.
As far as balance billing, and we are, I mean, we, we have people experiencing balance billing now, and they're still loyal to their dentists, even at the hundred and thirty-six dollars a month for a family plan.
Okay.
And that also said, most preventative co- um, services are covered one hundred percent. Where the issues are gonna be are things like root canals and things like that, which most general dentists don't do, they refer you to specialists. And if you use the plan wisely, you'll get yourself referred to an in-network specialist for those procedures, someone who you're not.
So, so if you get referred for a root canal,
Mm-hmm.
it will still be covered by that same, will the same, um, policy be in effect? That there's a certain amount that's going to be covered, or do you have to use their?
No, they'll still pay eighty percent, well, eighty percent for root canal for an out-of-network dentist.
Is, is it eighty percent of what they customarily cover? Or is it eighty percent of what you're actually charged?
It is eighty percent of what reasonable and customary charges are, so if, um-
So what they, what they would cover, yeah.
But they, that's why we, we chose to set that at the ninety-ninth percentile instead of the ninetieth or the seventy-fifth percentile.
Okay.
We wanted to try to make sure we were closing those gaps
Okay.
as much as possible for the employees.
Okay, and, and just one question, then I'll, uh, turn it over to my, uh, fellow selectman. Um, the 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 rate that we're paying.
Mm-hmm.
No, how many dentistses do they have in MetLife? I mean, in, in this area, in the number versus how many are in, um, the Altus?
It's really difficult to say dentist because
Number of dentists.
Because the thing is, is you could have, um, I'm trying to think of, I can't even think of any dentist names right now off the top of my head, but you could have someone from Bay State Dental.
Mm-hmm.
And because they have ten locations, they're in that ten times.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it's, it's difficult to say there, there's a hundred and fifty dentists in those. Um, I do know MetLife did say they're gonna work on trying to strengthen the network in this area.
Okay.
Um,
All right.
Whether or not they can do that, I don't know. I also know our employees, the people who were here and who cared, um, with the IAC, I believe most of them are on the dental plan. So it wasn't people who aren't affected by it making the decisions, and they seemed to like the idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Personally, I'm on it and my dentist isn't on it, but I still think it's a good idea.
Okay. Selectman Federici, then Selectman Gorman.
No questions.
No questions? No, no, no discussion?
No.
Wow. Uh, Selectman Gorman?
I gotta comment, I, I think you guys did a good job on that, Corinne, because when I worked for the phone company, we took five years in the union to go over all, every dental plan that we could possibly get for the people. And, and at the end of the five years, we finally, MetLife definitely turned out the best of all of them.
I'd like to take the credit for it all.
Yeah.
But in all honesty, we do have a broker who we work with out of Rhode Island.
Yeah.
She's been our dental broker for, long before I came on board. And she puts it out to bid every year, and it may have something to do with us offering the vision and the optional life insurance through MetLife.
Exactly, I, I, 'cause I know he came, he, well, he came in and, and made, um, I think he spoke, he-
They're different brokers.
He came in and he wanted to come in quite a bit and spoke to Lorraine and-
They are.
And they're all not great.
Yeah.
But MetLife definitely came above the rest of them.
And the time is, the timing is critical right now, you know, people are struggling with the increased premiums for, um, copays for doctors' visits and everything else if they can save on their kids' visits or on their dental. It's a big help, as well as, um, MetLife is committing to hold these rates for two years.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept, uh, the dental, based on the recommendation of the, uh, excuse me, IAC and our Corinne, um, I-
So moved.
I recommend that motion, and it's been moved and I need a second.
Second.
All in, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's effective for July?
July one.
July one?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Whoops.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to note that the Employee Benefits Fair is?
Oh, Employees Benefits Fair is May fifteenth at Brooklyn Park, eleven AM to five PM.
What is that?
The Benefits Fair.
The Benefits Fair.
Aye.
It's, um, all the representatives, all our, all our insurance representatives will, she's sitting down for this. All our insurance representatives will be there, um, our wellness coordinator, there's gonna be, for people who wanna know, you know, how to help cut costs and help us save money.
Right.
There'll be, you know, if they come, they can get information on the Good Health Gateway for free diabetic testing supplies and medications. They can get information on my medications advisor, where tier-three medications, which they're paying thirty-five dollars a month for at CVS, they can get delivered to their home for free.
Okay.
Um, high imaging copays can be waived at certain establishments. Um, incentives for wellness things like getting colonoscopies and losing weight and things like that. So people should come and get educated on what's available to them to save money.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we shake your hand again?
Nah.
Okay, thank you.
Twice is enough.
I, I understand. Okay, moving on, um, the town accountant's position.
Madam Chair, I put together, uh, some information for the board to take a look at and to consider and to also note that it's somewhat of a compressed time scale, I, I would think at this point. I need some direction how the board wants me to, uh, work with the board and initiate this search of getting the, getting, looking at and revising the job description if necessary, um, what you wanna pay, when you wanna hire, um, et cetera. So, uh, I would ask the board to have some discussion about that and, um, hopefully get going as soon as possible.
Uh, we can take that under advisement. Uh, we can take that under advisement. Um, I'm sorry, that wasn't to you, Nick. Um, we can take that under advisement, certainly, um, I, I do have some input with regards to the, um, job description. Um, but as far as the timeline, I, I will talk to my fellow selectmen and, and look for their input, uh, with regards to the timeline, which timeline to, to go with?
Well, if I may, through the chair.
You may.
Um, I noticed that in Nick's timeline, our next meeting is approving the date to approve the ad, so, um, with job description and ad, so I don't know if that's something, um, that we would want him to get started on, and then you can add your input. And then we could, we could take a look at it, and we'll, we'll have it for that meeting and hopefully decide on it at that time, and then, uh, we can either do, I mean, we, af- that's the most important thing, I think, and then after that, we can always, um, decide if we want the whole board to look at all the, all the resumes, you know, I'd be happy to.
I really think we all need to, to look at that, only because, um, this, this position, the town accountant is, is gonna affect, it's, it's a big position for the town, so I think we certainly all should be involved with that, with that piece, yeah. Um. Our next meeting is, remind me, Nick?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. Well, I don't think you can. So, the ad would be run after the thirteenth, actually on the fourteenth?
Well, I, I would, the proposal, the proposal here would be to put it on the website on the fourteenth, and then if you wanted to do it on a Sunday, the next one is the eighteenth. And then, uh, you know, it would already be too late for Thursday's reminder on the fifteenth of May, so it would be the following, the twenty-second.
Mm-hmm.
And then this would allow for, uh, well, um, approximately, approximately twelve days if you go off the Sunday, unless you wanted to advertise maybe on, uh, Friday, the sixteenth of May, that's a possibility. I, I.
Selectmen Gorman? Yeah?
Where are we advertising this job for, Nick?
Well, that's up to the board.
Okay.
But I, I'm proposing here, just, uh, following form, I guess, is to advertise at least in the s- uh, Sunday paper.
Okay.
But, uh, it, I mean, nothing is written in stone, each board can pursue it as it wishes.
I, I will say that Ryan, um, Ryan and, uh. Our recreation person have done some online sites.
Mm-hmm.
And gotten quite a bit of, uh, I guess that's where people are, they're online on these sites. I would suggest that we include a couple of those sites as well, 'cause it doesn't cost us any money. Um, we wanna, you know, solicit the best candidates and, and, uh, just so I'm clear on this, um, our current town accountant, um, does have the, is invited to apply as well.
Yes, that's, that was indicated in the letter that the board, uh, sent.
He's, he's, he's able to apply also.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Uh, one of the things that I, that I will say right off the bat, if I may?
Please.
Okay, um. Is that the two years, the certification, within two years, that that be straight, taken out? Because I think we want somebody with this certification, and I will, oh, certainly have a, open, I'm open to a conversation with regards to that, gentlemen.
And I, I definitely agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree also, and, um, the website you're talking about, is that state website?
Well, i- if, uh, I'd have to research which, um, industry websites, if you will.
Yeah, yeah.
Association, the thing, I know that, um, the, uh, the Mass Municipal Association is one.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Um, however, their ads run for, I mean, you can run it for a ten-day period, but they're, they charge it for the month.
Oh.
So, a- and, you know, it's up there.
Do we know what the rate for that is?
It's, um, the last I looked, it was like a minimum of a hundred and fifty dollars plus so much an extra word.
Okay, and how much are we paying for the Republican?
Well, i- if it were a Sunday ad, you're probably, even if you minimize the ad, um, you're probably looking at somewhere in excess of six hundred.
So, it's, it's minimal compared to what we're paying for the Republican?
Right.
Okay, but.
Right, that's, that's, right, that one website, right.
One fifty, yes.
If I may, I want that, I just got that in the mail yesterday, that Beacon?
Oh, yeah, you did get the Beacon.
Yeah.
So, put something in there?
That, uh, through the, through the chairman, that's the same thing.
Oh, it's the same thing.
And actually, uh, for those, since they publish, um, monthly.
Right.
Right now, I, I, I would sus- I suspect that it's too late for the May, because I think we, actually, so it would only, it would only advertise in June.
But that's still.
Which is after.
Well, then maybe we move the resume to, um, date just back a little touch. Maybe we could tweak that to.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm very concerned about not having coverage or having temporary coverage at a time of the fiscal year when the books need to be closed.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the town accountant, obviously, is a very critical position any time of the year.
It is.
Um, but the time of the year from mid-June to mid-July
Mm-hmm.
is a particularly critical one, because that is the time when all departments are closing their books and the, and the account needs to affect whatever transfers, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, so that is a very critical time of the year, and.
Okay, but if we were to move that to, um, even back to, wh- when is the, um, that publication, um, sent out, is that at the, the beginning of the month?
I think if, yes, I, I, I think it's probably sent out the third or fourth, the last week of the previous month.
Okay, the last week of the previous month, so that's the last week of May that people would receive the June edition, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we were to go to June fifth or sixth of that week, that's just backing you up maybe five days? And then, um, we'll review the, um, resumes, maybe, um, we shorten, make sure we're available to review all the resumes? We, we still could, okay, yes.
Say, if I may, through the chair, another thing to think about is if we're, we're, if we're, um, advertising on the MMA website.
Right.
The people who are going to look at that website to apply for the job aren't necessarily gonna wait till they get the hard copy of the Beacon.
Oh, okay.
They'll be looking on that website, so there will be people that will, you know, when, once we get the ad on there, and it publishes on their website, there will be people who'll be looking at the ad and submitting resumes, so they don't necessarily have to wait till, till it's actually out. Exactly.
Yeah, okay, but there would be some people that would, but you, you, you really think four days is gonna make that much of a difference? To move it four days, 'cause June, okay, somebody pull out a calendar, June thirtieth is what day, um, of the week?
For some reason, I think it's either, is it a Friday? I think it is, 'cause I think June flips over on a weekend. Is the week before is Col- is, uh, Columbus Day.
Did you say Kwanzaa?
Memorial Day, no, I was gonna say Columbus Day, but I was gonna say, uh.
It's a Wednesday. The, ju- uh, well.
Is that the Memorial Day weekend, isn't it?
No, the weekend before is, I believe.
The weekend before is Memorial Day, okay, so if we.
It's a Friday, you're right.
Thirty is a Friday.
Yeah.
Could you tell my wife?
Good for you, it is a Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we were to even, um, move that to the, that Wednesday, the fourth? And that would put us, um, the next week would be, uh, June, June eleventh?
June tenth is a board meeting.
Okay, so we can, okay. So, we have from the fourth until the tenth to decide who we're going to interview?
I would ask that the board allow for at least one full business day, because what if we get as many resumes as we did with the county? I mean, for the recreation. I, I'd ask for at least a, a business day so that I could get everything together, make copies, and so forth, um, and, you know, that would be the focus.
A business day to get it together?
Yeah, I, I would ask for at least that Thursday to get everything together so that I could distribute it to the board for that Friday.
Oh, so then we would only have that one day, that's not gonna work.
I mean.
So, wh- what about if we go to the third, that Tuesday, being the, um, the, the deadline? And that would give you Wednesday to get everything together, and we would have it on Thursday, Friday, excuse me. Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so that would give us one, two, three, four days, um, to look at the resumes?
Okay.
Okay, I would suggest also that we have a, a grid of some sort, uh, so that we're all, um, giving a, a, just in case we get snowed in with a lot of, um, contracts, excuse me, a, a lot of resumes, so we can weed them out and we can be all consistent with that?
Don't say snowed in.
I know, I'm sorry.
The way the, the way the spring's been going is.
Another four, four, another four, four-letter dirty word, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's good, that's good?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
When you, uh, Madam Chair, when you say grid, so when the job descriptions finalized, presumably at the, at the next meeting.
Right.
There'll be certain things in there, uh, current government, is currently certified.
Right.
Um, three years, three years' experience or whatever, five years.